Good evening. Tonight is August 20th, 2024, and it's City Council Meeting.
Recording in progress.
Tonight, can we get a roll call, first of all?
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffner. Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Present.
Say the Pledge of Allegiance. We think so. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is public comments on items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. It is as it says, those items that aren't on the agenda at all and items that might be on the consent agenda. If you would like to speak during this time, please give, fill out a card and give it to the clerk at the end of the dais. Each speaker is limited to three minutes or a total of six. If you can point somebody here who consents to be, to cede their time to you or somebody online, you can speak for up to six minutes then. You do not have to speak for three minutes. You do not have to speak for six minutes. It's just an upper, upper limit. Please be respectful of all the speakers. This is likely to be a lively hearing tonight or set of hearings tonight. I won't appreciate it, and I don't think anybody will appreciate people clapping, yelling, hooting, booing, whatnot. It makes it very hard for people to feel comfortable coming forward and giving public comments or otherwise paying attention. So please observe those rules of decorum, if you will. And I think, I know that people will be able to do that. Do we have a motion? Well, let's, let's take those public comments. Do we have any?
I have one.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council staff. Thank you for your service to Lewisville. I was driven to come along tonight and end my self-imposed exile from City Council, from the City Hall. Just over a year ago, I was almost killed trying to cross from the southeast corner of South Boulder Road to the southwest corner of South Boulder Road. I won't and I hadn't, to the best of my knowledge, ever come down here to speak before you in a car. I always walked and occasionally bicycled. I've made an exception tonight because I have to pick up my daughter from Monarch High School at 6:30. Otherwise, I would be on Zoom. So I, I'm, I'm here tonight really because I got the special agenda for your meeting next week with BVSD. Last week, as you'll know, the children, the teens went back to Monarch High School. I have no idea how many there are in North End neighborhood. We used to have two bus stops. I understand that BVSD have no drivers or limited set of drivers, rather. Now, the children from North End from 400 homes, there are 400 finished homes, including multifamily and single, now have to go to the west side of 95 to get the school bus. It doesn't even come into our neighborhood. So that's crossing five lanes of traffic at a busy time in the morning. I sent along a handout. The more I thought about this and the more I got irate about it, and I did call BVSD, Lafayette Depot, and ask if we were missing something because according to them, there's a drop-off in the afternoon, but no pickup in the morning. They tell me there's nothing they can do about it. So, you know, we know what Monarch High School campus road is, you know, like. I'm sure a lot of the people here tonight are going to tell you more about it. Right? There's already been one crash in two days of school on Friday. There was a crash there. So my neighborhood really has no alternative but to drive, even if we do drive our children to the bus stop. And so the more I thought about this, the more I thought that, you know what? Despite Mayor Lay, you were a counselor when I first came to this chamber to address and ask for a path or an extension of the trail down the east side of 42 from South Boulder Road to the traffic light you were going to put in. In the eight years that I've been here, the council has done nothing for North End, absolutely nothing.
Mark, I apologize. Your three minutes is up.
Okay. So I would implore you, please read the handout that I've supplied, and I'm open to any questions. I'm sure most of you know how to get in touch with me. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mark. Any other public comments? Okay. Move on to the consent agenda. I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do we have any council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda? Saying none. City managers report. We have the interim deputy city manager here tonight. Do you have a report for us?
Only would like to remind everybody of one thing, which is Labor Day is coming up. So that includes the Labor Day Fall Festival, the parade, the senior dinner, the pie contest, all that fun stuff. So we encourage everybody to come out and join in for that.
Thank you. Okay. The first item of regular business that we have tonight is vacation of existing drainage easement located on lots eight and nine of the amended plat of Parkwood filing number two. There's an ordinance and a resolution. Let's take the ordinance first. Ordinance number 1881, series 2024, an ordinance approving the vacation of an existing drainage easement located on lots eight and nine of the amended plat of Parkwood filing number two. This is the second reading and the public hearing. One comment at the outset, this is an ordinance, so there are two separate rounds of public comment. And if you speak at the first one, you can speak at the second one. You just can't speak twice in one or the other, if that makes sense. So let's go to the staff presentation.
Thank you. So Jeff Hurt with Community Development. So this is a request to adjust a lot line between two single-family properties and within an easement vacation. The properties are located at 171 and 187 Harper Street, and all notice requirements have been met for this case. So the specific request, sort of graphically described here, is to move the existing lot line, which is shown in yellow, to a new lot line, which is shown in red. The purpose being to basically better align the lot lines with existing conditions. The yellow lot line is in place because of a water line easement that's no longer needed. And so a lot line would essentially move, and with it, the easements would move. So no new lots are created with this request. The request does meet all of our city code requirements, except for one, that being the minimum lot size for the eastern lot. The eastern lot is already substandard in size, so it's sort of carrying forward in existing condition. So basically, this is a request for a minor subdivision or lot line adjustment with a subdivision modification request for that eastern lot. That is about 6,000 square feet as proposed, and minimum lot area is 7,000 square feet. But again, that condition already exists for the east lot line. It's about 6,000 currently, so it's carrying forward in existing condition. Staff does support the modification request. There's no increase in density with the request either. So there are two decision points for council tonight, as the mayor said. First is a resolution, which would establish the plat or the minor subdivision, which is essentially the lot line adjustment. And the second is the ordinance, which would relocate, would vacate the current easement and relocate it to align with the new lot line. So happy to answer any questions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Is there a, is there a presentation by the applicant?
I don't believe so. I believe they're here, though, for questions.
All right. Do we have any disclosures on council? Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. Again, there's no specific applicant presentation tonight and take the first round of public comments. Do we have any first round of public comments?
We do not.
All right. Do we have any questions from council of the applicant or, or staff?
Very simple question. You can answer from any spot. Just like both, the owners of both properties aren't in conflict with this. They're, they're in agreement that they want to do this. There's no conflict that we're trying to resolve?
No, they both signed on and both wanted to do it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. Any other public comment? Okay. Saying none. Council discussion. Yes, Mayor Protem.
Just to frame it out, I would move that we approve a vacation of the existing drainage easement located on lots eight and nine of the amended plat for Parkwood filing number two.
Let me close the public hearing first.
Too early? Too early.
Hold on.
Okay. I'm going to wait. I would move that we approve the vacation of the existing drainage easement located on lots eight and nine of the amended plat of Parkwood filing number two, and happy to speak and support if necessary.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion about this? The only thing I would say is that the criteria, as presented by staff in the staff report, are sufficient for purposes to warrant the change. And so let's do a, so we've got a motion and a second. Let's take a roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Councilman Berman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Okay. Staff, is there anything further that you'd like to present on the resolution?
No, that's basically it. Pretty simple.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the resolution? Number 37.
I move that we approve resolution number 37, series 2024, a resolution approving the first replat of the amended plat of Parkwood filing number two and easement vacation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is resolution number 38, series 2024, a resolution recommending approval of Redtail Ridge filing number one, final subdivision plat. And do we have any disclosures on council to make? All right. Staff presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Rob Zucaro, Community Development Director for the city. I'll be making the staff presentation on this item. So all the public notice requirements have been met, including the signs posted on the property, publication in the Daily Camera, the mailings posted at all required city I just wanted to start out by just mentioning, this is a final subdivision plat. The purpose is to really create lots, easements, rights of way needed to develop the property. It's not establishing the land uses for the property. So it's a, mostly a technical exercise that to show compliance with our adopted zoning and adopted policies. With our subdivision, we also have public purpose land dedications. And then typically with a subdivision, we have a subdivision improvement agreement. That usually includes public infrastructure, so it's making sure the developer builds the public infrastructure. Staff oversees that, issues construction documents. We oversee a warranty period on all those public improvements. So that's typically what's in a subdivision plat. There's a few extra things with this one. The subdivision agreement is also a development agreement. It includes provisions for some additional open space that I'll talk about a little bit. The applicant is proposing a series of sustainability measures, so there's compliance provisions within there, how the city would oversee, lead certification fit well, solar EV installation commitments that they've made. They're making some contributions to sewer expansion. They've also included a ban on rodenticides. We're anticipating they'll have to address some prairie dogs to put in the public infrastructure. And so there, there have been a lot of questions about using rodenticides, so there's a provision that would ban that. Then they have compliance provisions for transportation demand management, which was required back from the 2010 zoning. So the subdivision improvement agreement includes all those provisions in addition to the infrastructure requirements, which we'll get into because that's probably the most complicated part of this application at this point. There are a series of other agreements that are associated. Two of them are included in your packet. One is a wastewater treatment plan expansion, water rights dedication, and tap fee credit agreement. So that's in your packet as well. The, the applicant would be funding the design, and then the city would be building, but they're funding an expansion of the wastewater treatment plant to accommodate the development. We're also anticipating a transfer of water rights, and there's existing water taps out there for the old storage tech. So this addresses all those provisions. There's our operations and maintenance agreement for the metro district. We're anticipating the metro district will have maintenance responsibility for certain public improvements within the development. This covers that. Some of the roadway improvements cross jurisdictional lines into city and county of Broomfield and Northwest Parkway right-of-way. We will need to enter into an agreement between the city of Lewisville, Broomfield, and the Parkway Authority on some shared maintenance provisions. That's underway with those entities, the applicant's not directly involved in that, but before the construction documents are issued, that will have to be addressed. And then there's agreement for acquisition of open space agricultural lands around Paradise Land, Boulder County. Again, that's in the works with Boulder County. There's a provision in the SIA that says those agreements, which would be a purchase agreement and a conservation easement to the city, that's all being worked out and would be part of this as well. So you all reviewed the preliminary plat in February. I'm going to try to explain some of the things that have changed. Substantially, it's the same, the lots, the easements, the roadway, the trails, they're all substantially the same. They did add a third underpass. There was a lot of, there was a condition from the preliminary plat about the school crossing, going through the western open space. There is a third underpass. There are some trail surface changes. There's a new overpass for Northwest Parkway. And then they have additional details on the private road cross-sections. But substantially, staff finds it's the same plat application. Nothing has really changed with the plat document itself. I do want to talk a little bit about this plan. This is the Northwest Parkway IGA that the city actually entered into in 1999. This, the purpose of this plan was to create a buffer between Broomfield and Lafayette and Lewisville. And, you know, the purpose of that buffer was to maintain character, maintain contiguous open space corridors, agricultural corridors. And there's, there's some relevance to this plan that we talk about specifically. You know, one of those is this Broomfield parcel, which would receive a conservation easement. There's the land up here around Boulder County that they're dedicating as open space. And you can see all the hatched areas that kind of provide that boundary. So that's really where you get contiguous wildlife corridors, agricultural lands, open space buffers. But that 99 plan, which is still active and we're, you know, we're still implementing here, even with this development, has, you know, the, these development parcels in Lewisville and Broomfield, which, you know, aren't restricted by the plan. And the idea is, is that they're, they're growth boundaries. So the idea of a growth boundary is that the city purposely has the development outside of the buffer area. And then you reserve the buffer area for preservation, or in this case, there's some low-density development allowed. So this is consistent with the 99 plan. So I just wanted to point that out because we haven't talked much about that in the past. Again, this is a previous development. Storage tech was out there until, you know, the, all the buildings there were demolished in anticipation of the ConocoPhillips campus. And I want to reiterate again, the zoning set through that GDP, the ConocoPhillips campus GDP and the zoning agreement that were approved, those run with the land, so that's what's being implemented with this plat. The PUD and the preliminary plat from 2010, those are no longer active or relevant. We really just need to look at the zoning. So again, the preliminary plat approval from February, there were five conditions. One was Northwest Parkway Authority approval. So the applicant has had their agreement approved by the Authority Board. It isn't signed, but it was approved by the board without conditions, and it was delegated to the Authority's staff to work out some final amendments, but they did approve the agreement without conditions. So staff finds they've met that requirement. The traffic impact study had some amendments for our Public Works Department. They do have a final plan in that's been reviewed. They've complied with that. We asked for a BVSD updated agreement for right-of-way for the Campus Drive extension. They've received an updated resolution from the school district. There was a requirement to amend the zoning agreement related to when they could start grading. You all have approved that with the previous action. And then the last one was to have a straight, a safe street crossing for that campus drive alignment. So that's, that was this crossing right here, and the applicant, originally that was going to be some type of enhanced surface improvement, maybe a raised median or enhanced striping or lights. The applicant has come back and agreed to do an underpass at that location. So again, staff is finding that the final plat is substantially in conformance with the approved preliminary plat and the conditions. Again, nothing has changed on open space. They're proposing 139 acres of open space and public land dedications. And that's about 3.7 times our minimum that they'd be required to do. Again, I'm not going to get into the details, but happy to answer any questions. There was a lot of discussion and consideration about what would be the best lands for open space, what's the most undisturbed land, what would have the best wildlife habitat potential, and then the park location. Where would that best be served? Near the school and near residences? So there, I just have some of the factors that went into those decisions. And then again, kind of, it's really hard to understand the scale of the open space, but here's Harper Lake and the Coyote Run open space, which a lot of people might be familiar with. And this is a roughly scaled comparison of those areas. Again, nothing's changed on that. The road and trail plan, again, there's been some changes on that. The big thing is this underpass here going to the school. There's been some surface changes. Because this is a school route, we've asked that this be a paved trail instead of a gravel trail so that we can, so that we can plow it. There's the new overpass for Northwest Parkway. The applicant's provided a lot more detail on the underpasses and the road design. That's all in the packet. This is a conceptual of the school underpass. And then, of course, the campus drive alignment, which has been one of the, the primary things dating back to 2010, which needed to be in the first phase and a high priority for the city. Traffic analysis, again, all the substantial portions of the analysis haven't changed. The conclusions of the analysis haven't changed with the revisions that our Public Works Department has signed off on. Grading and utilities haven't changed from the preliminary plat as well. There's probably some more detail. The construction documents are under review with our Parks and Public Works Department, but substantially, everything is the same. Again, they do have a TDM plan, so that's, we're anticipating the metro district will actually have a hired coordinator that's funded through the metro district. When somebody comes in for a planned unit development, they'll have to show compliance with the plan. So we'll be able to see what that development is doing to promote carpooling and transit and biking and trying to limit single occupancy vehicles. So that'll be done with every future development. The sustainability commitments are in there. The applicant is proposing that there be some exemptions for medical and hospital when it comes to the solar requirement and the lead requirements. So they are, that is in the subdivision improvement agreement. Happy to go over any of the details if there's questions. So to the SIA, the subdivision improvement agreement, the applicant is proposing some unique provisions. We have a template subdivision agreement. Sometimes we make minor amendments to it. They're asking for a different structure, and I've tried to point them out in this bullet point, what the main, the main differences are. So first, we typically have the agreement just with the subdivider or the developer. They're asking that the city consider allowing it to be a three-party agreement with the subdivider in the metro district. Typically, we get a letter of credit, sometimes a cash deposit, but usually a letter of credit. We hold that during the construction of the public improvements. We can release it when big systems are done, like if the whole sewer system's done, we can release parts of it, or we release it all at the end. It's called construction acceptance. So we give all of it back, but 15% typically. We get 115% of the cost, we give 15% back. For two years, we keep that extra 15% as a warranty in case something goes wrong and they, they aren't able to fix it. The city can step in and use those funds. They're proposing that instead of the letter of credit, that the metro district, once they issue bonds, that that gets put into an escrow. There's an escrow agent, and those bond funds get drawn down as the construction takes place, because they would need those proceeds to actually pay for the construction. We would get monthly reports from a district engineer to make sure the costs are trued up and if we need more money to cover the improvements. There's all kinds of detailed provisions in there, but this is different than what we typically get. So if there was a problem and the city had to access the funds, we would have to access also through the escrow agent. So the subdivision improvement agreement includes an escrow agreement that has all of the details of how that would operate. So it's definitely a little different than our typical. They are requesting that we get an improvement guarantee of 105% of the estimated costs of the public improvements. And I want to clarify, there's, they're building a lot of public improvements that are outside of the development as well. That's not necessarily included in this, like the sewer expansion, that's covered separately. But everything that they're building that we're going to take over needs to be covered by this amount. So they're requesting that the improvement guarantee be 105% instead of our typical 115. And that, again, once we do, once we give construction acceptance, we typically give all the money back and we hold the extra 15%. They're asking that that be limited to 5% of the estimated cost. They also have what I'm, what our lender protection provisions. So again, I'll, I'll defer to the city attorney if there's detailed questions on that, but there's a whole series of provisions about, you know, if a lender needs to get involved in the development, you know, because if there's a default or, you know, if they're taking over ownership of the property, then how they're noticed and different provisions for that. So there's an extensive section in there about that also. Approval criteria. So all of that's in the staff packet. I'm not going to go over that. We, we went over that in more detail with the preliminary. Again, nothing's changed. It's the same analysis from the preliminary plat. We have design standards. We spell all of those out. Advisory boards. So we did take this to the Parks Board, the Open Space Advisory Board, to review the, the parts of the development that they oversee, public landscaping, parks, open space, and nothing has changed. Again, they reviewed a combined application, preliminary and final, so their comments still stand. I think we worked those out with the final, or with the preliminary plat hearing, but we put all of the information in the packet in case you wanted to revisit any of their recommendations. Planning Commission as well. They actually recommended denial of the application with the, their findings here. Happy to go over any of that. Okay, so staff recommendations. Okay, so staff recommendations of approval. So with your addendum that you received, we actually amended some of those conditions. Number one and number three in the original, we are, we're actually recommending just deleting those. We actually feel after some discussion with the applicant, those aren't necessary. One of them dealt with having that three-party agreement, having that signed off before we issued the construction documents. We want to give the flexibility, if they want to start building the roads in phases, that we don't need those agreements in place. We want the flexibility for that. And then, the, the, the third, the third and the fourth one, the third one was also deleted. That was a maintenance provision for a city exclusive easement. Talking to the city engineer, he doesn't feel that's actually necessary, so we're comfortable taking that out. And then, the, the fourth condition was relate, sorry, I'm kind of blanking on the fourth condition right now for some reason, but the, the fourth condition had to do water rights, thank you, with the city. So they're dedicating water rights to the city, and then the, the city would give them a credit. So it's how we determine the amount of the credit. So the applicant, there's 90 days to negotiate. After, if this is approved, there would be a 90-day period to negotiate. If they can't reach a negotiated agreement with our Public Works Department on the value, then the city and the developer could hire a mutually agreed-upon appraiser and come to that final value. So there's language in there for the fourth one. Here's all the conditions. If anybody has any questions about them, I'll go over any of them. They're mostly pretty, pretty basic things that we would want to get done before we recorded the plat, make sure that all the agreements are in place. And then, we actually have an additional condition that just came up just before the meeting, that I'm just going to read into the record, related to the subdivision improvement agreement. And it has to do with Exhibits B and C, because we have a schedule of improvements, which are the whole universe of improvements, onsite and offsite, and then we have Schedule C, which are the improvements that we would get the improvement guarantee for. That's a much smaller section of improvements. There may be some language that contradicts itself, so we're recommending an additional condition that states, prior to recording the final plat, revise the SIA to distinguish between Exhibit B, which graphically depicts the improvements to be constructed, and Exhibit C, which is the cost estimate for the improvements to be secured by the improvement guarantee. So, and to try to simplify that, if there's some language that contradicts the intent of those two exhibits, we would have the authority to clean up that language if this is approved. If there's any questions about any of the other conditions, let me know. That's everything we wanted to present to you this evening before the staff presentation, but happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Fahy.
I have one quick question. Is, on the campus underpass, is there already an agreement with BVSD for where and how that will get put in?
Yes. So they've reviewed, there have been discussions, they've reviewed the plans, they're in agreement with that. One of our conditions here, there is a public easement on the north side that will have to be provided, but my understanding is there, there have been multiple discussions and they're in agreement with that location.
Okay, thank you.
Member Tim.
Yeah, so just trying to understand, like, one of your bullet points is, you know, completion of the Good Hugh Ditch agreements and easement. So that's just, you know, something that needs to happen. It's kind of a technicality that needs to get finalized before the final plat is recorded. So that seems like a sort of good one to point out, like, what if there's an issue there? Like, what, what happens if they can't get to completion of the Good Hugh Ditch agreement, which is separate from us, right? We, we don't play in that game anymore after this meeting, but if they struggle with that agreement, what's, what's the next step? How does that get resolved? What, what?
Yeah.
Help us understand on any of these, if they're different.
Sure, yeah. So I think on that one in particular, it depends on what the issue is. Campus Drive has to go over the ditch, one way or another, and there's really no way to go over the ditch without having some agreement. In this case, they're relocating the ditch and rechanalizing it, and there needs to be an easement established. So there have been ongoing discussions with them. There's a letter in the packet that kind of describes what's outstanding, and I would just say from the staff level, we're not anticipating an issue. There have been ongoing positive discussions in the direction we need to go. It just needs to get finalized.
But so again, to my question, I assume all of these are pretty straightforward, and they'll all get their, I said, sort of like technicalities, they'll get ironed out. But again, my question is, what, what's the process if for some reason, the Good Hugh Ditch, people are like, nope, we're not doing it, and the whole thing is just?
Yeah.
Back to square one?
Right, so, yeah. So if, if they couldn't build the road over the ditch, then maybe the subdivision would get redesigned, and we'd be back in front of you with the design that doesn't go over the ditch. Guess that's one possibility. I think there's maybe other actions they would try to take with the ditch company to try to get resolution on that, which I-
But you'd come back to us? Like, if, if, if there wasn't resolution with that, then you would come back to us?
Yeah.
It's not like, oh, well, they didn't get that, but we're going to move on? Like, you'd have to come back to us if they-
For that one, yes. For most of these, they would have to be done, or else we'd have to come back to you.
Okay.
And so that's why we put them in. We also wanted to make it clear that, you know, that we couldn't record the plat. It wouldn't be appropriate to record the plat until the ditch easement is established. In fact, the plat has a, a blank line in there, so that once the easement gets recorded, that gets written in before the plat's recorded. So there's a whole series of things we need to make sure happens in sequence before the recording.
So the intention here is to record all of those blank spots, if you will, that need to be finalized before the plat is recorded?
Yeah.
And these will all probably just happen very easily and naturally through all your hard work and their hard work and third parties' hard work?
They usually do.
But if something comes, if something does not get resolved, then you'll be back to us?
That's a possibility.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, I think, to the, to the grumbling of the crowd, that you will come back to us if something doesn't get resolved?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
And I'd ask for, if you, if you feel like you need to make comments, please go out in the hallway and do that. It's not here. You can make comments if you want to make public comment, but not from the gallery and back. All right, other questions from council? I have a couple. One is, has come up, just sort of because we've just, some of the public comments that we've received have asked for postponement, because the, what's being put before us is not complete. And I think you've, you've explained that a bit in your description or your presentation, and just now you elaborated a little bit more with Mayor Protem. I guess I want to ask maybe a more pointed question. It may be for the city attorney, which is, let's assume everything goes south and there's no recording of the plat. What is the effect of that?
Well, I would follow up by, first of all, agreeing that any condition of approval that's not met would need to come back to you for further reconsideration, because the approval isn't perfected until all conditions are met. So, but it really would depend on what that looks like. Is it a complete redesign of the subdivision because they can't go over the ditch? You know, that's sort of on one end of the continuum. Or is it something a little bit more nuanced, that we just need you to approve a different modified condition to get us to the same place? So that would definitely come back. If the conditions aren't met, there aren't alternate conditions to address the, whatever issue has arisen, then the council always has the opportunity to reconsider its decision. That would be another public hearing, because, you know, if something fundamental to the project can't be completed, then you might need to make a different decision under your criteria. Does that answer your question?
No, that's, that's perfect. I mean, the, the fact is that there are some agreements that haven't been signed, like the Northwest Parkway Agreement. It's been agreed to by the, by the Northwest Parkway Authority. It just is not in the packet. I think there, there's sometimes, there's a misconception that every single document, including the ones that on, on this list, have to be in final form for a decision to be made tonight on this resolution. And I guess my question ultimately is, is it, is there anything out of the ordinary in, in doing what we're doing tonight that is making some of these agreements, finalizing some of these agreements as conditions of the recording of the plat? Is there anything that, that is unusual about proceeding in the face of that?
Yeah, I, I don't think so. I think it's common to have conditions that have to be met following an approval.
Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Curran.
Thank you. Directors of Charge, so would you mind going over a couple of things? There were, you, you reached out to neighboring communities, Superior, Broomfield, Boulder County, which I really appreciate on a project of this size. And I know over years, but very recently this year, you received feedback from all of them. Can you explain where some of that has been incorporated so that all of the communities that you engaged with had their concerns addressed?
Sure. So we, yeah, so again, we've received multiple referral comments over several years from each of these communities. You know, oftentimes, we address the comments when they make sense and meet, you know, certain policies. Sometimes there's, there's just questions, and they're exploring certain things. A couple of things I can think of is Campus Drive, there was a lot of discussion early on about Campus Drive, its current alignment versus trying to align it further to the north. And Boulder County, as an example, had comments that they preferred the alignment to the south versus bringing it up to Paradise Lane, because they felt it met the intent of a buffer requirement within that Northwest Parkway IGA. So that is something that I think we, you know, has informed the application. Broomfield, most recently, the conservation easement, they wanted to make sure that was within the agreements of this final plat, that the applicant actually gives a conservation easement for that Broomfield property. So as an example, we incorporated those comments, and there's a, in the subdivision improvement agreement, there's a section specifically that says that they will, you know, work with Broomfield to get that conservation easement done within a year.
And there were some suggestions that were specific ideas to improved safety on some of the roads, and I just was, you know, wondering if those, some of those got incorporated?
Probably some did. I'd have to know exactly which comment. You know, as an example, here's a couple of examples of things we didn't include. So, you know, for example, we got comments referring to another jurisdiction's adopted standards for underpasses. We actually asked the applicant to, we don't have an adopted standard, but we asked them to match the dimensions and design of our existing underpasses, which differed from that jurisdiction's, which I think is more appropriate as an example. So I think there are some instances, there, I think there were also instances where they, some communities wanted different bicycle lane configurations. We had actually worked with the applicant, instead of having kind of smaller sidewalks and more enhanced bike lanes. We still have bike lanes with painted buffers, but we had them put in bigger multi-use trails. So we felt like we achieved the same thing, even though it didn't meet a particular standard that another jurisdiction wanted. We felt that was very consistent with our transportation master plan. We were very surgical, I guess I'd say, about negotiating that, like, what's a school route? The school routes got bigger multi-use paths. The other areas had bigger than our standard sidewalk, but that was different than like a buffered, like a physical buffer on the bike lane, which I think we got some comments about wanting those types of amenities.
So one of the comments that I had seen, it was, I think it was from Broomfield, and it was talking about making it easier for public, or people access from RTD, and there was like, the idea of, I think, shuttles, or, you know, it's like that last mile type of concept when using public transportation to encourage people to make it easier for them to do that, which we would like. Even though that is out of the jurisdiction of the city of Louisville, has that been addressed?
So I think we're hoping that, you know, we have, the Transportation Demand Management Plan calls for exploring shuttle service, and then the Metro District might be able to help fund that. So that might be something that we could bring forward with the help of the Metro District. We had, we did talk to RTD, and RTD gave some comments about making sure that if there was future, but there is no bus service that actually comes down through this corridor right now, but if we were to get bus service, making sure that the street designs could accommodate bus turning movements. So we sent all of the construction documents to the RTD engineering team. There was a suggestion that they, that they have dedicated land for bus pullouts. We've waited on that, and I think we can implement that with future PUDs if we feel like there is going to be a bus that needs a pullout, you know, within any of those roads, but we didn't include that in the plat.
So work on it when each of the individual lots comes before us with the PUD versus the entire project?
Yeah.
Is that-
And if it's just shuttle service, I don't know that you necessarily need a full bus pullout on the main public roads. If we did have a fixed route, then we would potentially look at working with the property owners through the PUDs, or otherwise, to get those bus pullouts if we thought they were needed within the development.
Okay. Last question. We didn't talk anything about additional requirements, well, the, the type of chemicals used to manage the prairie dogs, yes, but what about other components of the park or open space with regard to specific types of plants to make sure that they're more like wildfire-friendly, or less friendly to wildfire, and things like of that nature? Has any of that been addressed? Because there, there's a really wonderful plan, and there's a lot of thought and money going into it, which I genuinely appreciate. I just want to make sure that we don't miss some of the finer details, since this is our opportunity to do that.
Right. So there is a planting plan that's still under review for the open space. Some of the open space is going to be graded to accommodate the roads and the trails and drainage areas, and the plan largely calls for native grass seeding of those areas. So there, and then the park isn't to be developed with this development, it's just the dedication of land. So the landscape plans are all natural vegetation, and it would be native vegetation, so there's no proposal within the parks and open space areas for like manicured vegetation. In the street right-of-ways, there is, and there are, you know, detailed plans that we're working through on that, within the road right-of-ways, the medians, the areas between the sidewalks and the development.
And so is there a, a spot for us to make certain that if we approve this, that those measures are still taken and part of the discussion with the city, given a lot of the wildfire concerns, the things we've learned about plants, and the, the requests for the community to reduce the kind of fuels that can be in, in, in an area or in this new development? Will we still have the ability to work on that, or is that done once we approve?
Yeah, that's, that's not done. The landscape plans are still being reviewed. And I know we got one comment from a jurisdiction about the right-of-way landscaping and removing junipers and wood mulch, is what I think you're referring to. So, you know, those comments are being considered by Parks and Public Works that are reviewing the landscaping. I'm sure they'll work with the developer on that. If, if, if you all wanted to be really sure, you could recommend a condition that the landscape plans not include junipers and wood mulch. There are many alternatives. They don't need junipers and wood mulch. If you felt strongly about that, you could make that as a condition.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Hamlet?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions based on comments we received from the community over the past few days that I'd like to have clarified. The first is some concerns we received regarding sustainability commitments, specifically the change from 2.6 to 2.54 megawatts for solar. Can you help us better understand that change?
Yeah, right. So the, the commitment was per square- So the commitment was per square foot of building area. And I think at the preliminary plat, there was a rounding error that they had 2.6 million square feet of development allowed. If you actually calculate their development allowance based on the general development plan restriction, it comes out to 2.54, 2,540,000 and some square feet. So that reduction was actually dictated by staff because we more precisely calculated their development allowance.
Thank you. And my second question that I'd like to clarify on behalf of our citizens is there seems to be some concern that monitoring of wildlife has changed from the preliminary till now? Can you help me better understand where that concern might be coming from?
Right. So I think at the preliminary plat, there was discussion about that the applicant would be doing wildlife monitoring, which I understand they will be. One of the things staff asked is that they provide a summary memo of all the wildlife monitoring that they would be doing to demonstrate their compliance with any federal and state wildlife regulations. So that memo's in the packet. They haven't provided the actual studies. Staff felt like a memo demonstrating what they would be doing and how they would be complying was adequate information to meet the city's standard, just to show how they would be doing it. Because we're not overseeing those, we're not reviewing those studies to make sure they're complying with those laws.
Thank you. That's all for now.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there, does the applicant have a presentation?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everyone again. My name is Sarah Kampa with Tribe of Architects. And on behalf of the Sterling Bay team, thank you for all of your time and staff's time and citizens' time for reviewing this important project. We will move quickly through this presentation. Some of it is a repeat of what Rob presented. But quickly, just to reiterate, you know, the approval requirements tonight for the final plat involve whether the proposal meets all of the criteria of Title 16, whether the proposal is consistent with the city's comp plan, applicable zoning requirements, and other federal, state, and local laws, and whether the proposed subdivision promotes the purposes of the code, Section 16 and 16.04. And we believe, as does staff, that the final plat submission meets these criteria. So quickly, the final plat outlines road and utility networks, horizontal development only, not vertical development. Future vertical development will align with the current GDP and meet the city's commercial design standards and guidelines. Importantly, this plat allows for the extension of Campus Drive between 88th and 96th, which is the third highest priority in the city's transportation management plan. And lastly, this plat exceeds the city's public land dedication requirements, dedicating over 139 acres. I won't go into detail here, there's plenty on the screen, but as a reminder, this plat is different from the 2021 GDP in key ways as shown, but also complies with set maximums and vastly exceeds minimal requirements of the standing 2010 GDP. Ultimately, our team's vision for Red Tail Ridge, for the property, has been directly influenced by citizens, by council members, and staff to accomplish the following goals: to create a premier innovation and life sciences campus, to create a new home for Avista Health and to keep them here in Louisville importantly, to dedicate more than 139 acres of public land for parks and trails, to extend Campus Drive, thereby enhancing safety and mobility for all travel modes on the site, and to create and manage a thriving diverse habitat for multiple species on site, more than exist on site today. Importantly, the three major roads shown here are paid by the development, not Louisville residents. The extension of Campus Drive, set to begin immediately, will provide new emergency access to Monarch and Avista, both in its current and in its future location. And as a reminder, this is not the last time we will be in front of you pending the results this evening. The council and the community will each have feedback here at the PUD outlined with all the PUDs on the slide. We know that the PUD process is also intensive and will, you know, will inform how any vertical work begins on the site. That said, Avista is looking forward to serving the Louisville community with a new state-of-the-art facility and urges staff and council to prioritize their application to keep them here in the So just a recap of where we've been and what we've been up to for the last six months. So in February, you unanimously approved the preliminary plat with the five conditions for final approval. And between now and then, and in many cases for many years prior, our team has been working closely with the city to finalize the subdivision improvement agreement, the service plan agreement, the O&amp;M agreement, and the wastewater agreement. And we've been working with non-city agencies like Boulder Valley School District and Northwest Parkway to finalize those third-party agreements. I think Rob did a great job of covering these, just to reiterate the five conditions that we believe we've met. We finalized the agreement with Northwest Parkway, including the Campus Drive alignment. We've addressed and rectified all outstanding issues with Public Works and Mobility, and finalized the agreement with Boulder Valley School District concerning the right-of-way along campus. And then we've agreed not to grade for a period of four months after the February 20th meeting, which we have upheld. And lastly, something we're really proud about is, kind of based on that February meeting, we have amended the plan in order to provide a safe passage for kids between Monarch K-12 and the open space to the south. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump through these, and I'm gonna jump to the fifth, the fifth one here, which is that safe passage for kids between Monarch K-12 and the new open space. So I'll highlight here on screen, the underpasses, all three of them are labeled, and I think there was a previous slide that didn't show one of them. So just to be clear, underpass number one was added as a result of the February meeting, the preliminary plat meeting, and we believe it makes the plan better. So thank you for that feedback. Underpass two is also on campus, kind of in the middle, and then underpass number three is there on the far east. And then the additional overpass bridge related to Northwest Parkway. So we believe that this has made the plan better, and I'll show a rendering here as well. So we are looking southwest. Monarch K-12 is on our right, kind of off-screen. Those cars are going there to drop off some kids. And then the open space is across Campus Drive, which is in the middle of the screen. You're seeing a ramp down, and then the underpass under campus. And this is just a kind of a section cut or an elevation view of that ramp down as well as the underpass under. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mark and Mary Ann for a bit.
Good evening, members of the council. Mayor Lay. I'm Mark Painter from Holland and Hart. I was here with you for the preliminary plat as well. And as needed, Mary Ann McGeeDee from McGeeDee Becker is here also as the special district council. As a little background, I wanted to just mention some of the complexity here in this transaction, which leads to the security and guarantee considerations. This was a big, is a big project by any standard in any community. It's actually one of the biggest in Colorado. There are lots of interlocking documents, there are lots of interlocking entities, governmental entities. It has taken a lot of collaboration, a lot of conference calls, multiple drafts. The SIA is actually up to draft number 39 going back and forth with the city. So it has taken a lot of work. There are a lot of lawyers, a lot of consultants, and the city staff has been involved. And I just wanted to take a moment to give a shout-out to your staff. You have been really ably represented in this. This has been a very long project, a very complicated project. Rob and his staff, Kathleen, have held everybody's feet to the fire where it was appropriate. They have collaborated where it was appropriate. They've been creative where it worked, and we can't say we appreciate that enough. This may come as a little bit of a surprise, but we development lawyers typically like to stay in the background at hearings like this and only speak when spoken to. But we know that the security and guarantee issues are paramount for you to consider. You want to make sure that what we're proposing actually works for you and protects the city appropriately. So we wanted to provide answers to a few questions we know we have. Why are we proposing this escrow model? How does the escrow model work? Is the city permitted to do the proposed escrow model? And our answer is yes, it is, and it is typical for projects of this type and size. And is the city adequately protected through the escrow model? And we believe it absolutely is. In fact, we think because of the district's involvement as a co-governmental entity with the city of Louisville, there are a lot of additional protections that come with that that just don't exist when you have a private developer coming in and doing a plat and doing a letter of credit type of guarantee. Which one is the button to go up? There we go. All right. So what are we proposing and why? What we're proposing is a three-party escrow agreement. It is an attachment to the SIA, and it is between the city, the district, and the escrow agent. Once it's in place, it works the same way as a letter of credit does. If the district and the developer default, which we'll talk about is actually kind of hard to do with a district involved, the city simply demands the money from the escrow agent instead of demanding the money from a bank in order to complete whatever needs to be completed. What is happening? Oh, I'm pushing buttons on this thing. That's what it is. Okay. This is, this is the right place. Okay, thank you. Both provide for immediate access to cash for an uncured default, which is one of your fundamental desires for your security if there's a default. But there are significant additional benefits to an escrow, we wanted to point out. When a special district is involved, the municipality either doesn't require an escrow at all because of the statutory obligations on a district to have the money to complete the project at the outset, or if security is required, they do it through an escrow agreement, not through a letter of credit scenario. Why? Well, that's because the district by statute must have the cash to complete the project to begin with. And that money for these security improvements would go into the escrow at the beginning of the project. 100% of the money would be there. And to clarify something, I think that was mentioned either in some public comment or in the staff memo, the money that's in the escrow can only be used for the public improvements. It can't be used for other improvements that the district is involved in. It's tied specifically to the public improvements that are being dedicated to the city and that are secured. Other safeguards that aren't available with a letter of credit are, there's mandatory monthly certification of the cost to finish, there are, there's visibility for the city looking at the bills that are coming in and the processing of those bills and the payments that are being made, and there's a rebalancing of the escrow on a monthly basis. The engineer for the district is certifying that the money that's in there is enough to pay for the remainder of the project, and as costs go up, that escrow may change. It may actually increase as well because of that recertification. That's something that doesn't happen with a letter of credit. Letter of credit gets locked in place. Sometimes they get readjusted, but you don't have the visibility on a monthly basis to make sure that's updated. So why not just do a letter of credit? Well, there's really no such thing as a $60 million letter of credit. That is a huge number. You don't see that, which is, I think, why you see escrows used by other municipalities in a situation like this, especially where you have a district involved. If it was available, it would be a multimillion-dollar annual cost, too. It would be phenomenally expensive to have it. And that would be utterly duplicative of the cash that's sitting in the escrow that's always being certified to take care of the remaining costs for the project. So as I noted, when a metro district is involved, cities approach escrows differently and security differently. Some actually don't require any escrow at all. They simply rely on the fact that the district has these statutory obligations to fund all the improvements upfront and have the money necessary to make it to the end of the project. Some require an escrow but don't require any kicker on top of that, any extra buffer. Our proposal is to always have 105% of the costs needed to complete the project. It's constantly being rebalanced, as I said, and that is done based on updated construction costs, and it's certified by an independent cost verification engineer. So when I say the district's engineer for this purpose, it's an independent person who has nothing to do with the project, hasn't had anything to do with the project, and hasn't been involved with the district or the developer in the past. The district, in this case, is the contracting party for all the construction, not the developer, which is one of the reasons why we said, let's add the district to the subdivision improvement agreement. Typically, you would just have, in a private developer situation, you would just have the developer and the city be a part of it. But here, we're adding another party so that you have an additional obligor, but it also makes a little more sense because that special district is having a relationship with the contractors. What that district does in addition is, by statute, they have to hold bonds, payment, performance, labor, material bonds for each of those contractors all the way through the process. And those bonds aren't necessarily limited in the same way as a retainage would be, but they also have to have a retainage with each of the contractors. There's a 5% retainage that the district holds for each of those through the end of the project, through final completion. So you have 5% as part of the 105%, you have a 5% retainage, that's 10%, and then you have all the bonds as well, which aren't limited to a 5% number. So you have that as a threat if the contractors don't do what they're supposed to do, you can call on the bonds. I've been doing this almost 40 years. Mary Ann can talk about her experience, too. I have never seen a lawsuit over a bond. I've been lucky, probably. I've seen the threat many times where somebody wasn't performing, but the threat of calling on the bonds is pretty terrifying to the contractors because these contractors get involved in these projects because they're bondable. If they default and their bond is called, they're not going to be qualified bidders anymore. So they make sure that they get these things completed. And what that does is that whole system causes the developer, the district, the contractors all to work together to make sure that the project is performed and that warranties are All right. So at the end of the main construction process, you have construction completion at that point. You have an inspection by the city, and the city says, okay, you're done at this point. We accept that these have been completed to standard. At that point, we go into the warranty phase, which is a two-year phase. As you pointed out, there's also a little additional for some of the landscaping. At that point, the 5%, the whole escrow ends, and the additional 5%, which in this case is estimated to be about $3 million, that $3 million is a cash deposit that's held by the city. It's not a letter of credit, it's not still sitting with the escrow agent, it goes directly to the city. The district still has to have the 5% retainage. The district still has to have all the bonds. So there is this 5 plus 5 plus the bonds as protection. So there is this 5 plus 5 plus the bonds as protection at that point. Overall, our thought is because the district is involved, it really creates a better scenario for the whole construction process and for the security the city needs. When you have a, an escrow involved instead of a letter of credit because you have these additional protections that the district is mandated to have in place by statute. So in sum, the city's access to the funds under an escrow agreement, if they need to get there to do that, is the same, whether it's a letter of credit or it's an escrow. The nice thing about the escrow is guaranteed that the money to complete the project is always there in the escrow account. And it's being updated constantly to make sure of that. You'll always have 105% of the remaining cost to complete the construction. The district has that statutory duty I told you about to maintain the full amount always. And different than the letter of credit, the city has full visibility into the process. In the payment process, in the certification of the costs, it's all there. Say overall, this process is what is done in many other communities. And one of the things we did with your, with your attorney and with staff was they wanted to know whether other jurisdictions did the same thing. We brought a number of examples forward for Arapahoe County, the city of Centennial, Loveland, Broomfield, Douglas County. They all went with a escrow, an escrow model. They weren't all the same. Some had a little extra required. Some didn't require an escrow at all. They just, they just relied on the fact that the district was there. So in terms of what you're required to do under the code, your code says, "A form of guarantee acceptable to the city must be furnished by the subdivider to assure the installation of all required public improvements." Well, the typical thing you have is a letter of credit that's supplied by a bank. Here, you have an escrow. The escrow agent will probably be a bank or a similar financial institution. You have the same access to the funds. And so I believe that this is a totally appropriate way to go forward for you. It is consistent with the way other jurisdictions do it. It's a way to make this work because of the size of the project, where a letter of credit just isn't practical anyway. And we believe the city is fully protected by going with this. So I'm going to turn it back over to Sarah. I'm sure you'll have questions, but I don't want to totally interrupt her flow here.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, well, we want to close tonight and just reiterate some of the economic impacts of this project for the city of Louisville and the region. So importantly, at full buildout, Redtail Ridge will have a $4.9 billion annual impact, including over $541 million in onsite employee spending. And it will have a $1.9 billion one-time construction impact. Looking more closely at Advent Health of Vista and their impact on the site, the new facility will have a four, close to $410 million annual impact and a 200, almost $290 million one-time construction-related impact. Focusing a little more on Louisville, the project will bring $1.6 million in annual impact, annual property tax revenue to the city and more than 10,000 jobs. You can see some of the other impacts on the screen here. But those are important, important for the region, for the county, and certainly for Louisville. And so just to close, our team has been hard at work with your city's staff for the last two years and especially the last six months since February. We have met all conditions of the preliminary plat approval and we meet the formal final plat approval requirements. We look forward to answering your questions and addressing your comments and ultimately look forward to advancing this project forward to deliver these benefits to the city of Louisville. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess council questions of the applicant right now. We may have other questions as we go along, but are there questions? Yes, Councilmember Faye.
I have one question. You said that the, the escrow amount would be adjusted. And I'm wondering how frequently that happens and what happens if it's a significant amount.
I'll turn that to Mark and Mary Ann, actually to Mary Ann.
My name is Mary Ann McGee with McGee, Becker, Cortez &amp; Williams, and I represent the Metropolitan Districts. So what's in the agreement is that prior to the initial posting and deposit of the funds from the bond proceeds into the escrow account, the district's independent engineer, and he's referred to as independent because he's never worked for the developer on any project and he hasn't designed any of the projects that were completed, so he doesn't have a bias in looking at the costs. And so that engineer is going to look at the cost to complete based upon the construction contracts that have been awarded and if there are some that have not been awarded yet, as to what the current costing would be in the community. And then add 5% and that's the amount that gets initially deposited. Once a month during the construction process, all the invoices and contracts are reviewed by that independent cost engineer. They certify the cost. So they're looking through every invoice to make sure it matches up with the signed contract, making sure it's for this project, making sure it's for the specific improvements that the security is posted for, and then determining if the remaining costs of the project have increased or stayed the same. The possibilities for increase can be change orders, field change orders, those sorts of things that happen during the course of construction. If those happen, then the independent engineer will say the cost to complete has gone up by this much money. And then there, that additional amount has to be deposited. Under the agreement, if there is an overage that the district doesn't have more bond proceeds to deposit for, then it's the developer's obligation to post that extra cash. Is that responsive to your question?
Yes, that pretty much covers it. Thank you.
And I anticipate that would probably happen once a month through the whole construction cycle.
Okay, I'm, I'm just wondering because having just completed a construction project, the final cost was much higher than the initial estimate. And so I just wanted to know that that was going to be maintained throughout the whole construction period.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? I have, I have a question and it's really, why not 115%? I think it's a question for Mark. Why 105? Why not, why not 115?
Well, there's a financial consideration, obviously. Because at, at 5% on almost $60 million, it's a, it's a large number and then it becomes a larger number. Now we're looking at $10 million coverage. And when you add that to the 5% that's a part of the retainage and then you add it to the bonds, then you're essentially way past the 15 that you would have and the protections you'd have under the, under a letter, a standard letter of credit. So we were looking at something that made sense for the district in terms of how it issues the bonds. It has the right amount of money initially for the bond issuance instead of a big overage plus the retainage. And putting that money to use on the other aspects that, that aren't part of the security improvements, but putting that money to work on the offsite improvements, such as with the Northwest Parkway or the wastewater treatment plant. Things like that are, are a priority, too. So it's, it's a big additional lift in terms of money.
I think I understand that and I understand the 105% kind of floating depending on what the actual costs are projected to be figured out.
Right.
Monthly, it sounds like. The other piece that, that kind of, I guess, concerns me a little bit is the 5% retainage that, that, I mean, I, I get what that is. There's a lot of work being done on the site. A failure of any one of a number of things could cost significantly more than $3 million. I guess I, tell me why that, I mean, I'm just concerned about what, what we're putting aside or what you're planning to put aside if this goes through for warranty amounts.
So the warranty, it was on my third slide there, is, is just take that 5%, sweep it. You terminate the escrow, sweep it, it goes to the city. The city holds it there. But the way, kind of the anatomy of a claim like that, and Mary Ann, you may want to correct me where I go off base here. The anatomy of a claim like that is if you have a default under the SIA, the city's going to let the district, which is a party to the SIA, and the developer know, hey, we have a default here. And 99 times out of 100, there's going to be an immediate rectifying of that problem. If for some reason, I mean, because of the statutory obligations of the district, I think it's very hard to imagine a situation where the district wouldn't, because of those obligations, it wouldn't take care of the expense associated with that warranty item regardless. So you're never going to dip into the $3 million anyway. But beyond that, the 5% retainage that you have from the contractors, that's a statutory maximum. The legislature said people are holding out too much from contractors and small contractors have 15% retainages that hang out there for a long time and that's their whole profit and it's sitting out there for three years. So they, they capped that out a few years ago at 5%. So the 5% is what we can hold back or what the district can hold back. And then the bonds, the bond, if they don't perform, the bonds have to stay in place statutorily for the district. They have to stay in place all the way through the warranty period, too. If, if the cost is more than the 5% for some reason, you still have the bond in place for that, for that very reason. And so there's the threat of calling on the bond that usually gets action from somebody. So I think that's why I said in almost 40 years, I've never been in litigation over a bond. And, Mary Ann, how many times?
Not since the 80s.
Not since the 80s. So it's, it's a hammer. The bonds are a real hammer to, to make sure people pay attention. But only when you go through, you would have to have, only when the retention isn't enough and only if there's no bond funds for some reason. And the district says, we're going to ignore our statutory duties. And the developer just says, yeah, we're not doing it. Only then are you going into the $3 million pot. And is the $3 million pot adequate at that point? I think it is because you're never, you're not going to have that problem of the bonds not being there. The bonds have to be there. So the bonds are always the safety net. So I don't think you get to the $3 million ever.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think that, that gives me the explanation I, I think I need. I mean, some of this is really driven by the, the Metro District form and I
Absolutely.
understand how that, how that works. And we've talked about that over a period of time. I think, did you, were you the one who was talking about the other jurisdictions that structured?
Yes.
Have they ever, you know, of the other ones? And set aside Broomfield for just a moment because they are highly unusual in my understanding in, in how lax, I shouldn't say that, that's going to get me in trouble. They take a few more risks than many communities do. But, but in these others, Arapahoe, Douglas, I mean, have, have there been others that you can point to that have been of this magnitude, $60 million?
Do you want to?
I mean, I can understand some smaller ones. I just wonder.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they are kind of all over the place. But they're all quite large by comparison to what the normal one is.
Sure, this is, this is Mary Ann McGee again. Again, each community deals with these issues slightly differently. And in trying to find exact examples, it's difficult. But for instance, in the city of Centennial, on a mixed-use development, commercial, multifamily development, what they provided for in their subdivision improvement agreement is that the developer was obligated. However, if the developer assigned or delegated their rights to the Metro District that was organized to serve that area, then the developer was no longer obligated. So it's identifying that that entity is there. It's going to issue the bonds and is going to pay for the improvements. Another thing they did there was to limit building permits. And so if those improvements aren't done yet, you can't get a building permit. In other circumstances, it's a CO restriction. So if you, and you have similar things in your SIA. I don't know if you want to talk to, speak to those, Mark. But you have similar, similar reference points in your documents that if the improvements aren't completed yet, then everybody takes a step back, takes a look at what's in the ground, is it sufficient to serve? And then, you know, the building permit or CO may be limited at that time. Another example, in Douglas County, they had a nine-mile pipeline that had to be built to bring renewable water from Castle Rock all the way up to almost 470. The development's just, let's see, west and south of Highlands Ranch. And the reason for that pipeline project is that there's all non-renewable water among all those small communities. And that newly developing community was told, you've got to bring the renewable water. So plats were being approved even though that pipeline wasn't built yet. And so we did a similar escrow agreement where the bonds were issued, the money was put in. Plats continued to get approved, development continued to occur. Well, and of course, it took a couple of years to get that nine-mile pipeline built that provided enough water for more than 12,000 future residential units. Do you want me to keep going?
No, I'm, I guess I'm just wanting to ask whether those two projects that you mentioned, one in Centennial and the other pipeline project, were $60 million plus projects?
You know, I'm trying to remember the, the total amount on that pipeline project. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I think it was less, maybe 25 to 30 million in that range. But it was, that was just the pipeline. If we go into each of the subdivision improvement agreements that went to each of the plats that, you know, that you would be adding those up because it's a huge project. The same thing in Centennial. They, they add up over time. Another is in the city of Aurora. Speaking in that circumstance to improvements that were being made to E470, major north-south improvements and east-west improvements to connect an area there. Adams County put money in, the city of Aurora put money in, and the Metropolitan District there, the Metropolitan Districts there put money in to improve interchanges and major connection points, all of which were necessary for the development in that area. And they didn't have any security from any developers. And that was, yeah, that was north of 30, 40 million. So there's many projects done this way, understanding that the districts have the money to complete them.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from?
Do you have a question?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So for those of us in the room and online who are not lawyers or financial experts, I'd like to root this in a concrete example because I will admit the 5% makes me uncomfortable, especially when we're sitting here going through our budget cycle and seeing what the actual cost of our capital improvement projects are. So root it in an example for me of like, the road over the Good Hugh Ditch collapses and costs $5 million to fix. And this is during the warranty period. How do we go about achieving that fix?
Thanks a lot. Okay, so the road collapses. It's under warranty. Is that what you said? So at that point, you have a, there's a warranty claim by the city saying, you've got to come out and fix it. The $3 million is sitting there. As I was saying before, I don't think you get to the $3 million because what you have is you have a responsibility of the district to complete the obligations of the district, which include the warranty. But the, the district also has a 5% retainage from its contractors that were involved in that. So they have that money to draw on and that's a threat to those contractors. Say, we're going to pull this money down if you don't come out and fix the problem that's here. And in addition, if the And in addition, if the contractor says, no, I'm not going to do that, take my money, I don't care, I'm not going to do it, then you have the bonds, and we can go after the bonds. But on top of that, you have, again, you have the district's obligation, and you have the developer's obligation behind that to make sure that it gets taken care of, because the warranty obligations under the SIA are the warranty obligations that are given by the district and the developer to the city. So the buck stops with them. They'll turn to the contractors, they'll turn to the bonds to collect that money. And again, the bonds aren't limited by the 5% number. The bonds are there throughout the process. So the bonds are worth a lot more in terms of how much money is covered by the bond. So.
Director Zuccaro?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, a little bit about the purpose, and I think Mr. Painter had it correct. Usually, something happens during the warranty period, the city asks the developer, in this case, the Metro District, to fix it, and we would expect them to fix it. We're not having to access those funds. The funds that the city is holding during the warranty period, that's kind of a backstop, and if we're in a position where there is, for some reason, a conflict with the developer and the Metro District, we would need those funds to make that repair. So they're there for that purpose. Again, we would expect the developer and the Metro District would usually take care of it, but if something goes wrong, the city does need to rely on some reasonable amount of funds to make the repair.
Thank you. And, oh, don't sit down quite yet.
I was trying to pass the baton.
No, you got the baton, you can say. And so am I understanding correctly that the 5% that's being held from the contractors is held through the warranty period?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And the bonds are held all the way through the warranty period as well.
Thank you. This, it's referencing, there have been comments from the community concerning the impact of the construction on our current roads, roads that are not necessarily part of your plan, and how you plan to mitigate while you're doing all of these improvements to the Redtail Ridge development. How will you lessen the impact, the day-to-day impact to our community, whether that's damaging our roads, because we know that a lot of, we've recently gone through a lot of construction the last couple of years. We see the damage to the roads from all that construction. I think the concern is that that's going to be exacerbated. You'll be doing, going through our community, our residential neighborhoods, adding, I mean, although you're building a energy-efficient community, you know, running hundreds of trucks a week through residential communities is really not super friendly to the development of that project. Is there a way for you to not have as heavy of an impact to the people who live here, their day-to-day, and the roads?
Yeah, I'll take that one, Mark. So we'll be phasing a lot.
Can you, can you provide your name?
Oh, sorry. Ryan Amos with Sterling Bay, Redtail. We'll be working a lot with the GCs, specifically with the mass earthwork that will be going degrading, for instance. We'll be using a lot of bigger equipment there. There'll be a lot of transportation early on, but most of that equipment will be on-site. So we'll also be phasing taking that equipment off. Most of the time, it'll be off-hours when you have busy, because we also won't be able to start work until, I believe, the restrictions, 7:00 AM or 8:00 AM. So we'll do a lot of planning on the weekends, where we'll bring that equipment in on off-traffic hours, so that we don't disturb main traffic disturbance through there. And then we'll also be coordinating with the GC, a lot of phasing as far as the road infrastructure as well, that we'll have to work with city staff on, too. But the main corridor that we'll be using is primarily US 36 coming up through, as well as Northwest Parkway. So we'll be incorporating a lot of the enhancements and improvements on the infrastructure already. So if we have to come back through and repave something that we've damaged during construction, we'll go ahead and do that, and we've already planned to do that through our securities and likewise.
Sorry, and you're referencing the inner, like, 30, the, what is that, the south end of 36 exit? So the Northwest Parkway 36 entry is where you're, so you'd be coming from the Parkway or from 36?
Correct.
But not necessarily, like, the Louisville-McCaslin 36 would not be the primary access into the community?
Correct. And we've also, during a lot of our bidding and estimating, we've also told GCs that we would not be allowed to use 88th and basically that McCaslin corridor. So we've already allocated a lot of the traffic through the main US 36, Northwest Parkway, that southeast section coming up through the original tape drive entrance.
Okay.
So we've consolidated a lot of traffic through there.
Good, thank you.
And just to clarify with our, thank you, with Director Zuccaro, this is a horizontal part of the development. This is not the vertical part of the development in terms of the amount of vehicles and so forth that are going to be going through doing anything. There's, it's not the same thing as what's going to be done. Oh, I'm really making more of a statement there, aren't I? Let me, I guess my question is more, we're going to be dealing with those issues more specifically in PUD agreements, are we not?
Right, during the infrastructure construction, there will be equipment having to come in and out of the development. You know, in addition to the heavy equipment that's there, there will probably be construction equipment coming in and out. During the PUD development as well, yes, there will be construction equipment coming in and out. We don't know if that's going to be a 10-year, or like, in the tech center, it was longer, spread out over time.
But those, the issues relating to that will be dealt with on the PUD end?
Well, we typically have
I mean, are they necessary to making the decision that we're, we got in front of?
So I would say that, you know, we don't have standards for bringing equipment in and out. We do have right-of-way permits, so that if somebody damages right-of-way during construction, we require them to fix it. That's the thing we have. We haven't had a mitigation plan for construction as far as requiring someone to only, you know, come in off of US 36 and Northwest Parkway. It sounds like they're voluntarily doing that with their contractors right now, telling them to stay off of 88th and McCaslin. But again, we didn't contemplate having that as a regulatory requirement with the plat or a PUD. But, you know, certainly, we could look at something like that and work with the developer if that's something they wanted to voluntarily do at least.
Thank you. Okay, why don't we take some public comment? Can we, again, just to reiterate, you have three minutes per person. If there's somebody that you want to pool time with, you can speak for up to six minutes. Don't have to do the three minutes or six minutes completely if you are able. If you absolutely, completely agree with the person who just was before, it's perfectly fine to say, I absolutely agree, here, here. And again, would appreciate your keeping, making sure that you, one, tell us your name, tell us where you live. You don't have to tell us the street address, just the town or city that you live in. And that's, I think one of the things I would say is, Director Zuccaro talked about kind of what we're approving, we're not approving tonight, with conditions, without conditions. And we're bound, I mean, the zoning is the zoning, and a lot of, as a result of previous decisions, we've got the 2010 ConocoPhillips GDP that's in place. So we've got the criteria that people have seen, and the more you can speak to those factors, the better. You don't have to, but that's what is going to be on the table for us after public comment. So with that in mind, tee it up.
And just to, for people making public comment, please note that the timer will be on the screen now. First up, I have Rob Price, followed by Amber Greaves.
Good evening, Mayor Lay, Mayor Protim, and council members. I'm Rob Price, Assistant Superintendent of Operations for Boulder Valley School District, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight in support of the proposed improvements to Campus Drive, which serve both Monarch PK8 and Monarch High School. The district fully supports the widening and extension of Campus Drive. This project is vital for enhancing the accessibility and functionality of the Monarch Campus. The planned improvements will not only benefit vehicle access, but also significantly improving traffic flow, reducing congestion during peak school hours, and during critical safety events. In the aftermath of the Marshall fires, we are acutely aware of the importance of quick and safe entry and exiting. It is not only essential for people on the Monarch Campus to have multiple paths to evacuate, but also for emergency responders to access the site. The improvements to pedestrian access are equally critical. The safety of our students, staff, and community members is a top priority, and the proposed enhancements, including better sidewalks and crosswalks, will provide a much-needed safe passage for everyone accessing the Monarch Campus. This will also foster a more walkable and bikeable environment to both schools. In particular, I would like to express gratitude for the inclusion of the underpass in the project, thanks to city council. This is a significant safety improvement for the project, ensuring that both students and pedestrians can cross safely, separate from traffic. And finally, I just want to thank city staff and Sterling Bay for their collaborative approach to this project, their willingness to listen and to quirk grade our needs and design have been invaluable. Again, I will just say in conclusion, we strongly endorse the proposed improvements to Campus Drive, and we look forward to continuing the partnership with the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Amber Greaves, and then up next, Joy Brook.
Good evening. My name is Amber Greaves from Superior. Following the preliminary plat, individuals have been seeking information about the status of and the plans for current wildlife on the proposed site. We have asked questions via city staff and of Sterling Bay's contractors, and have received minimal response. I am relieved to see that Sterling Bay has very recently, and finally, responded to community urging to not use rodenticides, which would have introduced toxins and the high potential for secondary poisonings into our regional ecosystem. However, it is of utmost concern that the only remaining hope for animals such as prairie dogs in the path of bulldozers is that Sterling Bay will undertake reasonable efforts to relocate them before killing them. It's private property, so why should local leaders care? And why should landowners be authentic stewards of existing wildlife when profit and economics reign supreme? It's 2024. We know a scientific thing or two now about the consequences of dismantling ecosystems. What happens when a keystone species is decimated due to human land use? When a major food source for regional wildlife is eliminated? When habitat diversity sharply decreases? Coyotes, hawks, eagles, snakes, burrowing owls? And when vegetation grazing and clipping by natives such as prairie dogs is eradicated? Which, side note, is a fire mitigation and conservation strategy recommended to protect us in Louisville's own wildlife hazard and risk assessment. It matters greatly what you decide to do on the front end. So what are reasonable efforts? Discussing the topic and deciding you won't make the financial investment? Moving a prairie dog across the street? Your July 10th memo from ERO mentions that relocation activities began in 2023, but not one person has been willing to speak to those, and whether any prairie dogs were actually relocated. Is the developer aware that the timing of relocation should occur in the late summer and fall? Is the developer aware that Pueblo Chemical Depot is accepting relocated prairie dogs in accordance with CPW until October 30th of this year? Has the developer taken any steps to contract with a local prairie dog expert or relocators? If there aren't responses to those questions or preparations already in the works, how are you making reasonable efforts? My ask tonight is that the council digs into this. I also ask that Sterling Bay provides a transparent explanation of the plans for existing wildlife on site. I urge you to engage experts to employ legitimate passive relocation of prairie dogs to open space on site that can and should be left undisturbed, not graded. If you are unwilling to leave habitat undisturbed and to methodically encourage prairie dogs to those locations, then I urge you to engage experts to humanely trap and relocate them to Pueblo Chemical Depot or other viable site. Without your due diligence toward these efforts, and without you addressing the discrepancies between the preliminary and final Platts with respect to wildlife monitoring, then this proposal and all the colorful slide shows and promises to bring in shiny new wildlife is nothing but greenwash. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Joy Brook, followed by Dana Bove.
Hi, my name's Joy Brook. I live at 1590 Garfield Avenue. I'm a retired schoolteacher, and I worked so I could retire and enjoy my retirement. And unfortunately, the air pollution is a big problem, and the traffic is a big problem. We did a bunch of work on the petition about this project. It was not listened to. We wasted a lot of money on election. That wasn't listened to. I don't know what to tell you guys, except you're responsible for our financial condition. And if you think 5% is reasonable, you haven't been paying attention to the inflation and the economics that are going on around here. So regardless of what you think about it, at least make a good financial decision. This should not be approved. There are conditions that need to not be said yes to. They need to be said no. The developer is not to be trusted. This is not what we need to be doing with the biggest project in the state. It needs to be a premier situation, not a giant mess. It doesn't need to be bulldozed. The trees need to be saved. The wildlife needs to be taken care of. They don't have the money to do it, then maybe they shouldn't be doing it. We shouldn't be left holding the bag. We need to be doing our business as usual, not catering to their needs. Do not give in to special conditions. Think about the traffic problem. Where is the plan? What are you going to do about 36 and Northwest Parkway? How am I going to get to Denver? Am I going to be sitting in traffic for hours? How am I going to ride my bike? People are already telling you about getting run over. What about the air pollution? What about the light pollution? What about climate change? What about our city infrastructure? What about water? They told me, oh, we don't worry about water, we just make them go find it somewhere. Well, that's not going to keep working. Think a little bit about the future. We don't need to be grading that. We need to be having community rescue, working with the community, not having our staff catering to the developer. We need a transportation plan. We need to take care of wildfire concerns, and all conditions need to be met before you give the approval. This plan is not ready. You're irresponsible if you say yes. You are selling us down the river. Think about your budget cycle. Think about our capital improvement. Think about our city. Do the right thing.
Thank you.
Dana is pooling time with Charlotte, who is online, and then up next is Julia Rayburn.
Could you get me to the desktop there to get that PowerPoint up? And which way do you click to advance? Just left? Right? I'll figure it out. Okay, thank you. Should I start now? Okay. My name's Dana Bovee. I represent Front Range Eagle Studies. We're a group in this whole area, in Boulder, and we have volunteers and staff that live in Louisville. So I just wanted to say good evening, members of the Louisville Council, and I want to begin by expressing our gratitude for your decision to prohibit the use of poisons on prairie dog populations within the Redtail Ridge site. This is a significant step in safeguarding not only these key This is a significant step in safeguarding not only these keystone species, but also the many predators, including the bald eagles that we study extensively, that rely on them. However, while this is a commendable step, it's only part of the broader obligation we share, to protect and conserve habitats critical to these majestic birds. The land that will be ceded to Lewisville by the developer has immense potential as open space, but this must not come at the cost of eradicating the prairie dogs and therefore the food source of our local eagles. If the city permits the elimination of these colonies, the consequences will be far-reaching, not only ecologically but legally. As stewards of this land, the city has both a moral and legal duty to ensure that developments do not harm protected species. The prairie dog colonies at Redtail Ridge are not just another development obstacle. They're an essential food source for the sterns bald eagles, a species and nesting pair deeply cherished by our community. Allowing the eradication of these colonies would directly impact the eagle's ability to feed and sustain themselves, potentially leading to their decline. This would not only be a failure of our collective conservation efforts, but a violation of federal law. The Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act explicitly prohibits actions that result in the molestation or disturbance of eagles, including activities that disrupt feeding. The data we have collected, that is in the report we have sent to each of you, clearly show that the sterns eagles rely heavily on the Redtail Ridge site for hunting and foraging, with a significant portion of their diet coming from the prairie dog colonies there. Removing this critical resource would almost certainly constitute a violation of the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act, as it would diversely change feeding or other essential biological functions necessary for sustaining the adult and juvenile eagles. Additionally, under City Code Section 16 dot 12 dot 0275, a code that the city is bound by, the city is required to ensure that all developments align with federal law, including the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act. We strongly recommend that the council implement a conservation plan for at least the northernmost tracts of the designated open-spaced lands. Given that grading plans for these areas have not yet been firmly approved, this is an opportunity to preserve these tracts in a natural state. By doing so, we can protect the prairie dog colonies that are vital for the sterns eagles' survival, ensuring these lands remain a sustainable and valuable habitat. Please consider the profound implications of this decision, not just for the prairie dogs or the eagles, but for the entire ecosystem that depends on them. By preserving these prairie dog colonies, you're not just protecting the food source for eagles, you're upholding your duty to conserve the natural heritage that makes Lewisville a unique and cherished community. We respectfully request that you ensure any development plans for Redtail Ridge include meaningful protections for prairie dog populations and, by extension, eagles that depend upon them. Where am I with time? Finally, the first photo here, you have our report. It's a photo of the sterns eagles at the top, the females on the left and the male on the right. And below is the female and her juvenile fledgling from this year. These are on the stadium lights at Monarch High School. Next is a map showing light post hunting perches just 300 meters from the prairie dog colonies at Redtail Ridge. Here's a reminder of the language and protections in the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act. You have that in the report that we sent to you. And next, these photos are a reminder that we provided documentation of eagles feeding on prairie dogs from Redtail Ridge. The male at the top on one of the light post perches, the female below at North Redtail Ridge, and here's the female again below in front of the Monarch High School sign feeding on a prairie dog. And as you should have had our packet and report, we provided scientific data showing the extensive amount of time these valued eagles spend on the Redtail Ridge hunting sites. Thanks for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Julia Rayburn, followed by Catherine Smith.
Hello, council and guests and members of the community. My name's Julia Rayburn. I live in Lewisville, and I'm not here to say here, here to my previous speakers. I'm actually here to provide my full-throated support for the resolution to approve the subdivision plat. I've lived in Lewisville for nine years, and it's always confounded me why we have this prime piece of land that has previously been used for economic development purposes, which is sitting idle. I recognize that it has some other ecological benefits right now, but I also appreciated the presentation that showed the extent of open space that is around the area that will absorb a lot of the ecological impact of the development. I've moved to Lewisville. You may know from my accent, I wasn't born here. I haven't lived here for 30 years, unlike some other members of the community. But I chose to live here. I chose to move here, and I choose to continue to live here. If I had come to the Lewisville of today, when I made the decision to move here all those years ago, I may have made a different decision, quite frankly. And I'm really looking forward to having more invigoration into the community, more job creation, and more people buying lunches at restaurants, and hopefully opening up some of the blighted commercial real estate that we have in this city right now. So I also want to really give my thanks to the developers for their patience with the process and the community, and to the council staff. I know that you guys have done a really great job trying to weigh and balance and make informed and practical decisions here. So I really hope that sanity prevails here. Who doesn't love prairie dogs? Who doesn't love eagles? But really, we've got to get real here. This is an absolute travesty if this plat is not approved today, and we waste one of the best resources that Lewisville has in our favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Catherine Smith, followed by Sherri Summer.
Hi, I'm Catherine Smith. I'm a resident of Ward Three, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the city's financial interests. I've been attending the Finance Committee meetings recently. I know you are struggling with closing up some budget gaps this year, and one of the things that I am concerned about is that I'm not really seeing a good picture of what the costs are to the city as the development progresses and what income streams are flowing to the city. In addition, the decision of the council to set aside the improvement of the US 36 interchange means that there's a big cost to the city coming that isn't really part of the calculations that have been going on. And while I appreciate the developers' sophisticated presentation, I would say that I don't know what fiscal, what's their term? Fiscal impact in the billions of dollars. I would like to see us looking at it from the point of view of what's coming out of the city's coffers and what's going into the city's coffers. And a VISTA's, a nonprofit like a VISTA, it's a more complicated calculation because their revenues, they're not paying taxes on them. They're a nonprofit. And while there are other benefits to the city of having a hospital of the caliber of a VISTA in the city, the financial impact is not as great as it sometimes sounds. As part of your financial considerations, I think what you're really being asked to do is a risk assessment here, and that when you are determining whether you want a letter of credit or you're okay with an ESCO agreement, what you're really giving up, if you go with the ESCO agreement, is you're giving up the resources that come from a third party. Everything that comes from the ESCO agreement is there today. There's some more controls on the cash flows, but whether you go with the letter of credit or you go with the ESCO agreement, in either case, the developer is going to have huge incentives to cure defaults if they occur. I worked in finance. I do know that you can get a letter of credit for $60 million. I'm going to guess you can get letters of credit well into the billions. So that's a little bit of a red herring. And just want to say quickly that I am really disappointed from a trust standpoint that the city council imposed a condition at the preliminary plat phase, and now the staff recommendation is to ignore that condition and to go forward without the agreement from Northwest Parkway. And I personally have been at three meetings where the developer has represented that that agreement is forthcoming, and it has yet to show up. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, Catherine.
And next up is Sherri Summer, followed by Cindy Bedell.
Good evening, council. Sherri Summer, and I'm from Lewisville. This is the largest land decision that Lewisville may ever see. We've looked at proposals since beginning four years ago. They've had 20 months since Planning Commission recommended denial to work on this agreement. And the only words that come to mind, I hate to say, are hack job. This is quick. This is dirty. There's too many holes. We are being asked to take on huge amounts of risk and uncertainty in a context that just simply is collapsing around us. When you look at the commercial real estate market, I have heard, I've read several articles that say it's actually worse than during the Depression. There was more building during the Depression than there is currently. In 2019, when Rubachel first came to town, Denver was one of the best markets for commercial real estate. Currently, it's one of the worst. Industrial is also overbuilt. So there will not be a lot of demand for this product, and we need to seriously consider what we're up against. Sterling Bay is not in good financial shape. You got many emails about this. They promised Lincoln Yards is going to be done by 2024. They said that in 2020. Well, I'll tell you, now they're selling off pieces of land. To me, if somebody is selling towards the bottom of the market, when the market's going down, that means they need money. And now they're proposing, look at what they're proposing. They're saying, well, we don't really need to give you quite as much money. We need to give you different instruments. These are all being proposed at the 11th hour. Who in their right mind, I love the expression, let's get real now? Let's get real. Who in their right mind would think about accepting such a big deal with financial conditions coming in at the 11th hour like this? It's way too complex, and it just screams to me, this is dangerous. You know, they don't even have all of the approvals recommended, and then there's ambiguity from our planning director and some from our city attorney about will those requirements be needed or will they be required? I really don't think this is ready for primetime. I really think we cannot, I don't understand how a yes vote could be made, even with the five conditions that had the green checks next to them. These are all approved. Well, they don't have the agreement with Public Works approved. They don't have the water credits approved. These are not like minor little things. These are huge things. And the Good Hugh Ditch? Why has it taken them four years and they still don't have that? The Good Hugh Ditch authorities live in Lewisville. Why is it taking so long? And why do we think that we can get it anytime soon or ever? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sherri.
Cindy Bedell, followed by Teri Barr.
Hi, I'm Cindy Bedell. I live in Ward Two in Lewisville. I'd like to talk about four things: wildlife and natural features preservation, the low fiscal benefit for the cost and quality of life for Lewisville residents, traffic, and I'd like to remind you that the Planning Commission recommended denial. So number one, wildlife and natural features. Can you hear me? Okay. The applicant's statement tonight that this project will create more wildlife than exists now on the site is just frankly absurd. They're going to grade nearly the entire site, including the open-space set-asides. I remind you that the Paradise Lane public dedication is not within the city of Lewisville and is already restricted under an IGA that limits development to a handful of large residential lots. While the Paradise Lane preservation is appreciated, keep in mind that the applicant is using the Paradise Lane dedication to make the public land dedication appear more impressive than it actually is. I encourage you to require more wildlife and natural feature protection in the Redtail Ridge final subdivision plat. It's not too late to require a smaller footprint for the development and more natural features wildlife and wildlife habitat preservation. It's not too late to require more open space within the city of Lewisville project boundaries. According to the city of Lewisville contracted wildlife mitigation assessment, prairie dog towns have a protective effect against wildfire spread. We should protect more of this keystone species in their historic habitat. So in addition to 9.4 habitat and wildlife that the project will include continuous monitoring of wildlife, I'm going to talk fast because there are many another time, we need to add back that whatever cannot be relocated, and we have a relocator and a local agency willing to help, we need to make every effort to relocate before lethal control. And if lethal control is used, it should be limited to carbon-26 monoxide gas. The city of Lewisville fiscal analysis for Planning Commission projected a measly fiscal net gain estimate of between $884,000 to $1.3 million annually. On the low end, this will only be 189 per month per acre for the site. This is a very low benefit for the massive cost to the city of Lewisville residents, quality of life, and the environmental destruction. The traffic estimated to be generated by Redtail Ridge is unacceptable and will seriously degrade the quality of life of Lewisville residents and anyone who must travel through the corridor. The DIA Skyride AB bus gets on the Northwest Parkway near Viavara, and that intersection is going to fail or reach a D level, depending which traffic study you use. 21,285 additional vehicle trips per day is too much. This project needs to be pared down in some way to reduce traffic impact. This is going to generate almost twice as much as Storage Tech. Storage Tech was 12,400 daily vehicle trips, and at 21,285,000, that's double. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Cindy.
Teri Barr, followed by Josh Cooperman.
Thank you, council members. I'd like to urge the council to approve this proposal. And I think that my point is the developer and the owners of this plot of land have jumped through 1,000 hoops to get to the point where they're proposing this development, and therefore to delay this proposal again would be basically denying that right to use the land as the council and the developers see fit. So I think it's a legal issue. Let the developer develop this land in a responsible manner and let him get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh Cooperman, followed by Richard Morgan.
Before Mr. Cooperman begins, after these comments, I think we're going to take a break. We typically take a break about 8 o'clock and...
You can do it now if you want.
You know, no, it's all right. It's all right. I just wanted to announce that so that somebody wouldn't get called up right after you. Thanks.
All right, Josh Cooperman. I live in Lewisville. I want Redtail Ridge to be the best possible development for Lewisville, our region, and the world, given the many constraints on this development. Plans for Redtail Ridge have improved since 2022. Given the current plans, though, there are a few relatively minor changes that would make relatively major improvements. Let me briefly highlight a few. I would like to see phased clustering of the PUDs to prevent sprawl and temporarily preserve more open space. more open space. Second, Broomfield has requested and been in discussions apparently for a long time about an under or overpass across Northwest Parkway just north of Tape Drive. I think this is a great idea for equity, for pedestrians and bicyclists, for sustainability, and for economic vitality, because we want all the people living over there to very easily come over to Redtail Ridge. Also, as has been mentioned by Councilor Kern, for which I'm quite thankful, Boulder County and Broomfield and Superior provided some recommendations, in particular about infrastructure and especially about infrastructure for bicyclists and pedestrians. If I were up there, I would go through every single one of their recommendations in detail because they're all very good. One thing which is not mentioned is that some of the offsite improvements could really use protected bicycle lanes. All right, let me now change directions. I do not understand why city staff has not performed and provided an updated fiscal impact analysis of the current proposal. Is it because it's only a subdivision? Was there a fiscal impact analysis with the Kenoko Phillips GDP? If there was, I'm sure that's rather out of date. Residents deserve to see such an analysis before you decide on this proposal. Please request a fiscal impact analysis, including all relevant expenses to the city. Finally, the unique provisions of the subdivision improvement and development agreement give me serious pause. I have no expertise in these matters, but I have one thought that you could ask about. What did the city do with the CTC? Right? There's a metro district there. What sort of provisions were provided when we developed that? So I ask you to critically evaluate the final plat for Redtail Ridge and diligently work to shape Redtail Ridge into the best possible development for Lewisville, our region, and the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. All right, let's take a break until 8:20. I'll give you eight minutes here. We'll start probably at 8:20. We're back on. If you could take your seats, please. Who is the next public commenter?
The next speaker is Richard Morgan, followed by Tamar.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. Good evening, councilors. Richard Morgan. My family and I have lived in Lewisville for the past 25 years, and thank you so much for the work you do on behalf of our community. I certainly appreciate the comments of my fellow residents, both for and against the final plat. Myself is a financier of commercial real estate projects. Let me just say that the added security of bonds or letters of credit to benefit the city, in my opinion, is far superior than relying upon the financial capacity of the developer. But having said that, I've written to the city council on numerous occasions, and I've spoken to you in person, both also in support of this development. The long list of reasons and benefits, I believe, to the residents of this city, to why we should do this project are numerous, documented, and confirmed. But let me bubble up two primary concerns. First is the one-way-in, one-way-out of Campus Drive. My daughters have been students at Monarch High School, and this is particularly concerning, certainly following the Marshall Fire devastation. This should move each of you to action and quickly fix this glaring weakness, and the developer is willing to redevelop Campus Drive and make it a full thoroughfare. And second, our largest and most loved employer of Vista Hospital is in jeopardy of leaving Lewisville. If we can't confirm a way forward for the hospital, the possible loss of a Vista Hospital will sadly be on this city council. Your decision tonight to confirm and approve the final plat today is critical to the future of Lewisville. So thank you very much for your support of the Redtail Ridge project in advance, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Richard.
Next up is Tamar, followed by Tim Stalker. Tamar, you might be muted on your end.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Mayor and city councilors, thank you for your service to our community. I appreciate your patience in listening carefully to everyone speaking tonight, and thanks to the applicant for the improvements to this plan. Mike Putney is online, sharing time with me. I hope that's okay. I speak for myself and not for him. Can you see that Mike's on there?
Yes.
Okay, great. I would like to ask you to address a problem with the process that, to me, can be boiled down to haste makes waste. There has been obvious pressure from the business community to get this plat before you tonight. On July 9, at the city council meeting, Mayor Lay referred to the Chamber of Commerce notice about alleged slowdowns in connection with this Redtail Ridge matter. It seems to me that this constant pressure to move this along quickly has led to hard-to-follow revisions, last-minute changes, and writing conditions on the fly. Please allow the applicant and staff to do their jobs and bring you a complete application. I don't mean this to insult staff. The packet is well organized and comprehensive. The problem is that the boards and commissions have reviewed completely different applications than what is before you tonight. Also, there are profound differences between what you approved as a preliminary plat and what is in this final plat application. Also, between what was released Friday and what is before you at 5:00 PM today, there's an additional underpass revealed just tonight that is not in the location represented by our open space advisory board. You should not approve with conditions. Councilmember Dickinson said this could be technicalities, but he asked an important question: what if they are not? Please ask the city attorney, if the changes that occur after approval are substantial, either in favor of the applicant or in favor of the city, are you creating grounds for an appeal of this decision that could make this take even longer? How will you make the decision on that continuum of what should and shouldn't come back to council? My ask tonight is that you can, I'm sorry, my ask tonight is that you continue to wait for a complete application. I believe that you should table this meeting rather than continue it. Your job is to make a decision on the application before you, not on assumptions about the future. You had four days to review 10 pages of changes to the legal subdivision improvement agreement. Also, our city manager is not here tonight, and our deputy city manager is probably wearing many hats. If you table this meeting, it would be great for you to have a copy of the developer's slides and staff slides ahead of the meeting. When this is rushed, mistakes are made, causing unnecessary delay. So what I'm asking is, wait and get this right. Take the time to consider conditions, and also take the time to consider conditions based on the public comments made tonight. I have a few more things to say if you're going to allow me to use Mike's time.
You can.
Great, thanks. I wanted to, I have a couple things to respond to that were in response to things that were said tonight. I'm afraid that Director Zucaro misunderstood Councilmember Hamilton's question regarding the wildlife studies. I would like to add that the difference between the preliminary subdivision agreement and the final agreement is on page 26 of the preliminary subdivision improvement agreement. There's a section 9.4 Habitat and Wildlife. This section has been removed from the final plat. This says, it said, and no longer says, "The project will include continuous monitoring of wildlife uses, including burrowing owl and raptor surveys, a prairie dog management plan, migratory bird nest assessments, and pollinator protections." The summary that Director Zucaro mentioned is not legal and is not connected in any way to this development agreement. The language that's been taken out of the development agreement is what is important. It's what binds the applicant to do these studies. Also, regarding the solar commitment, the preliminary clearly said 2.6 megawatts of solar. The final allows, the final has changed this, I just want you to be aware, to change it to a per square foot, with an exception for the hospital, which brings it down to 2.1. You can listen, and then like two more things, you can listen to the Sterling Bay lawyer and the Metro District lawyer telling you why the escrow is better than the letter of credit. I understand they have worked with you and our attorney and with staff, but council members, he's telling you to believe him because he has 40 years of experience. His experience is in working for developers. Please hire your own lawyer with expertise in this area. And then finally, I saw the slide shown by EPS. I would like you to let the public know if the unsubstantiated number of 4.9 billion in annual economic impact has any influence on your decision. If it does, I would call that into question. If not, I just really ask that you disregard that unsubstantiated number. Thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate your taking my comment.
Thank you, Tamar.
Up next is Tim Stalker, followed by Andrew Radgouski. Up next is Tim Stalker, followed by Andrew Rogowski.
Hi, I'm Tim Stalker from Lewisville. I just have a couple of things. Presentation by the developer with the slides from EPS, that's a study that was done for about half of the city, maybe less, the business community, and probably you as councilmembers. Most of the city hasn't even seen that. That was blasted out to the business community in Lewisville this week. They've had the privy of seeing that information, and you probably have too. If so, you need to disregard it. It's not in the documentation of the staff presentation. It wasn't a contract that was put together from the staff for a study for the city in its entirety. There's no way to access the actual methodology of the study. There's no way to determine how those numbers are even arrived at. They're just a single slide, basically. Fairly impressive, if you don't think about it. That's what I'm asking you to do. Another thing, just sort of related to that, is just this overall problem that I think the developer probably hasn't maybe been aware of. But they say repeatedly that they worked with the city. And I want to know who, and where, and when, right? I think they worked with the city's business community. We're not anti-business because we're not for Redtail Ridge, or for at least a delay so that you can evaluate it effectively. That's not being anti-business. We want a more effective development there that can meet the needs of the entire city, not the business community only. A lot of the problems, in my opinion, around this are because of the abuse and the inappropriate use of a Facebook group in town with no editorial integrity called OO Anything Goes. That's where everyone in that community resides. That's who the editors have empowered, and that's the reason why the division that's been created around that in town has certainly not been helped by social media. And I encourage you to try to encourage your community to start using that effectively, or to find some editors who know how to run it. We don't have a newspaper in town. That is a serious problem. We have no newspaper. We have no journalism.
Tim, I apologize, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Up next is Andrew Rogowski, followed by Larry Donner.
You did very well, thank you. Just to let you know where I stand, I am among those who voted against Redtail Ridge when it came up for a vote, but I don't think that I'm crazy or that anti-anything. And let me just say, I have yet to meet anybody who doesn't want a Vista to move to a better location if that makes them succeed. So, let's cut down the hyperbole a little bit here. I think what I want is the best possible deal. I don't think we've gotten it yet. I think there's progress being made. I think there should be more progress made. So, that's basically where I'm coming from. I have a concern about traffic, like many people do. And for me, and this is just how I do projects, I look at what's in the critical path. And for me, the transportation issues outside of this, and I'm talking about the interchange at 36 and Northwest Parkway, and also 88th, you know, it's a little bit off to the side, but still, if those improvements aren't made first, I think you're going to see the traffic get worse. The traffic will get worse even if you don't do any building at Redtail, because that's how traffic is. It gets worse year by year. And I'm not going to take the heat for it. These folks aren't going to take the heat for it, but you'll take the heat for it just as soon as you pass this. And then, when traffic gets bad, it's going to be council's fault, and it's just going to get worse and worse. I think you should address that first, and then worry about the rest of it later, because we'll have a better idea of what we're up against if we do that first. Maybe impossible, but that's just how I look at it. I'm also... I have a question, unfortunately. We didn't have a chance to ask questions at the presentation, but maybe you can bring it up if it's reasonable. There is a thing called, I believe, force majeure, which is an act of God. And I'm wondering, in all of this escrow that we're talking about, is there any scenario where this whole thing just goes to crap because some act of God occurs? You're building, you're building, and then we get big rains. And I say big rains because it happened in this neighborhood. It happened and flooded the golf course a few years ago. I don't know how many inches of rain it was, but it caused all kinds of damage. Is there a scenario in which everybody's pointing at each other? They're pointing at you, and you're pointing back, saying, "Well, it's not our fault we had big rains. Who's going to pay for this?" Does this project get approved? Then we have something, and I think we're going to get big rains. It's not a question of when. You know, it's a question of when more than then. Is there some way we end up holding the bag for this? And with that, that's my time. Thank you for listening.
Next up is Larry Donner. Larry, if you could unmute on your end, please.
How do you... What does the caller need to do to unmute? Is it like...
I have given him permission to speak, and I've asked him multiple times to unmute, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, Larry, we've given you a bit of time, and we'll have to move on. We can come back to you if there's any other... Do we have...
So...
Do we have any... Do we have anybody else in the queue?
Nope.
Okay, I think we're done. Sorry, Larry, we're just not able to make connection with you there. All right. Thank you. I want to take just a second to thank everybody who spoke up tonight, online and in the council chambers, because... And I really appreciate the quality of the comments and the concerns that everybody is expressing. And I want to thank all of the people who wrote to us, read all of those emails, and I think my colleagues did too. Got a great deal out of them, asked questions of staff in preparation for this, to try to make sure that some of those were covered. And I also, I guess I want to say, well, a couple of things. There's one comment that Mr. Stalker made that I took to heart about what it means to work with the city. What that means typically is that throughout the land use planning process, applicants work with people on city staff. That's the way I understand it. There is extensive negotiation discussion with our director of community development, manager of planning, our city manager, and their staff, as well as the city attorney, all of whom do an exceptional job at defending and upholding the city's interests. Now, people can disagree with what they recommend and what they do, but there is no nefarious... I may be taking Mr. Stalker's comments out of context, but I heard them, and I wanted to make sure that people know that we've got folks in good faith who are working very hard to try to come up with the best path forward for the city. Do we do it all the time? No, but we try our best, given the information and the limited time that we have, to do just that. At any rate, I think that's the gist of what it means to work with the city. You know, and it comes back to our form of government here, which is that we are policymakers on the dais and decision-makers, but ultimately carrying out our policies and decisions and applying the ordinances in the day-to-day course of business in the city is for staff. That's the way that it works under our charter. So, at any rate, I just wanted to make that clear, and if I misconstrued Mr. Stalker's comments a bit, I don't mean to. It's a bigger question of trying to make sure people do understand. And the conversation is closed. It's council comments at this point. The way I want to frame the discussion on this resolution, and it'll be the same in the next, is really to proceed by exception. That is to say, I'm going to go through the rules that we have to, or the factors that we need to consider, and to the extent that there is agreement that the staff report is correct, and/or that we have unanimity on that, we'll go to those things, we'll pass through those to the ones that we have concerns about and need to discuss in greater detail. And it could be that we have... We stop at every single stop along the way, or it may be that we focus on a few of them. We'll see how that works. What I want to kind of emphasize in all of this, it's sometimes lost in discussions about land use, is that the rules or the decisions that we make aren't made in a vacuum. The will of the people is reflected in the ordinances that we have. That is the voice of the people. And both the community and the applicants have to, you know, work under the same criteria. We don't or can't stray beyond that. We can't require applicants to do more than the rules allow. They sometimes do. They did in this case, as they described in some respects, and others we'll just talk about in a minute. But it's important, I think, to recognize that, because it's not so easy just to simply say, "We don't like this, and therefore, no, we can't do it." Not many people have really said that tonight. Some of the folks that write to us, kind of understandably, because they're upset, or they're in favor, just sort of say, gee, just approve it without any consideration whatsoever. I mean, that's just the same error on the other end. So, I just wanted to kind of frame it that way. And then what we'll do here is, I'm going to go through each council member... Well, what I would like to do is to sort of get... I'm going to try to get in front of me, and I urge council to get in front of them, the criteria for this particular resolution. And if you give me just a moment, I will find that, and we can walk through it. And Director, if you have... If you have that, if you ever... If you can find that faster than I can, I could pack it up in front of me.
Do you want me to display the alternate resolution? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it might be good. I can probably... Yeah, it's on page three of the... All right, there... We passed a preliminary plat in February, and there were five conditions. They are there on page three and four of the packet. Staff has indicated that each of these have been complied with or substantially complied with. As I said before, some of them aren't fully signed off on, but there will be no recording of this plat, even if we pass it, unless these things come to pass. So, does anyone on council have any concern that any of those five conditions... I can go through them if you want, but they are there, and we talked about them back in February. Anybody have any concerns that those have not been met? Or, let's put it a different way, does everybody agree or disagree that those five have been met? Does anybody believe that any of them have not been met?
Negative.
I'm going to say negative. If any of these have not been met, in your view, please speak up. And I don't see any... Does everybody believe that they have been met, the five conditions? Yes? Okay. Any dissenters on that? And, let's see. Rob, you've got one. You've got, I think, the part that has been changed, well... Have you got that?
This is the non-black line version. This is the clean version of the revision that came in the second addendum. So, I could bring up the black line version if you'd like, or I can have the clean version, but these are staff's recommended conditions. And then I have one other that I read into the record, out of abundance of caution, to clarify some language in the SIA.
And I think we have unanimity that the ones that have been presented are the ones that were imposed by council in its decision in February of 2000.
I'm sorry, are you talking about the conditions of the last...
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I thought you wanted the proposed conditions for this resolution.
We'll get there. We'll get there shortly.
Let me bring up... Sorry, I misunderstood. Give me just a minute to bring that up.
Number four of your slideshow has all of it.
All the conditions, okay. And I was going to bring up the actual resolution. I just had to figure out what...
And that's fine as well.
Okay.
That's on...
Okay, here we go.
Is this the revised one?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I am bringing up... Now, I'm bringing up the resolution from February 20th, which had your conditions of approval. had your conditions of approval, which I think is what you wanted.
Yep.
Here we go.
All right. So, first of all, are we comfortable, or are there any of these conditions that anybody on council believes have not been fulfilled, based on the information that we've heard tonight, and all of the information that we have received through public comment, and staff presentation, applicant presentation, and otherwise? It's five conditions. Okay. All right. Now, we can go to the — why don't you go to the resolution, if you would, which is These include all of the conditions that need to be achieved in the passage of the resolution, and there are a total of 10 of them. I guess my first question is to the council of whether there are additional conditions that we would like to add, based on our discussion tonight. We had, as I have heard, at least some discussion around the sort of fire and resilience in the area, and there was another one, I think, that was discussed anyway, a little bit, in terms of some sort of conservation plan. Not suggesting that those, you know, one way or another ought to be included, but I open that up for any other conditions besides the ones we have here. Please.
I have one clarification. So, Rob, initially, it was 10 conditions, but it looks like two have been stricken. Is that correct?
Yes, so we're down to eight.
Eight, and one's been sort of modified.
And then one was added back in that's not in writing, that we're recommending. I can read that again.
And, Rob, maybe it's worth explaining the couple of them that have dropped from the original resolution.
Sure, yeah.
That you presented.
Yeah. Let me just pull them up, so we're all talking about the same thing. Sorry, I don't know why it's not coming up here. Let me see.
It's — no, it's not in the — this is an email that was included in the supplement from Ginny, I think, to us, had the discussion of the couple of —
There we go. Sorry, it was just hidden back there. Okay, so the first one is, here's the black line version. So, the first one was, originally, we were recommending that we wouldn't issue the construction documents for the roadway improvements until that three-party agreement, Lewisville, Broomfield, Northwest Parkway, was in place. That definitely needs to happen before we can get to some of the improvements, but they may want to phase the roadway construction documents, and we felt this really just wasn't necessary, necessary condition, just in order to get the project moving. If they're ready to move forward with construction on a segment of the roadway, removing this condition allows us to separate that out. So, we recommended removing that. Number three was a note that we've had on other SIAs, subdivision improvement agreements, relating to maintenance and what we have to repair within exclusive easements, if we're doing work in exclusive easements. It was a little confusing. I talked to the city engineer. He felt like we could just remove it altogether. We had adequate protection to work within our easements without this language. He was fine with it. And then the last one relates to the amount of credit, the monetary credit that they would get for providing the city water rights. For one, the way we've drafted it, it's optional. They can provide the water rights. If they don't, they just have to pay our full TAP fee. If they do provide the water rights, then we would have to agree to the value, and if we don't agree to the value, we have the option of a mutually agreeable appraiser to determine the value. So, those are the three amendments.
The three changes?
The three changes from what was included in the original staff packet for the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah. And then there was the one that I read into the record, if you'd like me to go over that now.
Yes, please.
I can reread that in. Okay, so, we would add a ninth condition that states, prior to recording the final plat, revise the SIA to distinguish between Exhibit B, which graphically depicts the improvements to be constructed, and Exhibit C, which is the cost estimate for the improvements to be secured by the improvement guarantee.
Okay. Thanks. Now, so, that's at least what's in the resolution. I want to go back just to the three criteria that we have to ultimately satisfy, if or that the applicant needs to satisfy, in order to, for us to approve this. And, excuse me, my understanding is first, whether the plat conforms to all of the requirements of Section 1612075, the second being whether the approval of the plat will be consistent with the comp plan, applicable zoning requirements, and other applicable federal, state, and city laws, and then finally, whether the proposed subdivision will promote the purposes set forth in Section 1604020 of the code, and the standards set forth in 1616. If you are looking at your packet, this particular analysis that the staff did for us appears beginning on 20, page 21 of the staff memo, and at page 81 of the packet. And I guess what I'm going to ask is, as we go through this, whether there is any question that people want to raise, or discussion that you want to have about each of these. First, is whether the plat conforms to all of the requirements of Title 16. Any question about that?
I'm not aware of any substantive changes from the preliminary to the final in regards to this. Like, in our preliminary, we went through all these point by point, and nothing in this area, to me, has changed. So, I haven't changed my opinion. If there's something that someone feels has substantively changed in these categories, I think that would be interesting to hear about.
Any others? Okay. Seeing no other. Whether the approval of plat will be consistent with the city's comp plan, and applicable selling requirements, and other applicable federal, state, and city laws. Any question or discussion about that factor, as it applies to the evidence in this hearing? Okay? And the reason I'm going through these is, even though we have done that in the preliminary, we're doing it as a final, I want to make sure that if anybody has any additional comments, that we make sure to take them. Finally, the third piece is whether the proposed subdivision will promote the purposes set forth in 1604020 of the code, and comply with the standards set forth in 1616 of the code, and Title 16. Now, that's — you know, that's the piece about the subdivision. And I guess if folks have questions relating to the standards that were, or the portions of the SIA, I want to discuss any of those. If you go to page 29 of the staff memo, these are, this is the list of deviations, 29 and 30, from, that the subdivider and the district have requested. And these are, this is sort of a discussion about the risk assessment that one of our citizens, Ms. Smith, was talking about. That's really the — it sounds like we have unanimity or agreement on other pieces of this, but this is one, I think, that's worth probably having a discussion about. So, who would like to start us off? Do you have the deviations that we're talking about? Okay. Council, Pro Tem.
Yeah, I think this is kind of, seems to be the meat of sort of the issue here, is this seems to be the largest, I don't know if it's ask, or irregularity compared to maybe what is our normal piece, right, so talking about the line of credit versus the escrow funds, and trying to understand the amount of risk that the city faces. So, this is obviously super complex. You've got a nice little 10-minute presentation on part of the complexity of it, in raising millions and millions and millions of dollars, and being able to, you know, hold that, secure that, use that, and what those risk factors are. So, you know, Rob, if you're the right person to answer this, please do, if you want to point it some other way, but, you know, trying to understand, from the city's perspective, you know, the risks. So, we heard a lot about, you know, that 5% warranty amount, and kind of the process if, you know, road fails. We've kind of been through that a little bit, but just trying to understand, you know, concretely, you know, a line of credit that is supporting this construction period versus an escrow fund, which, what I know of escrow is, it's very secured, protected money, you know, it's other people's money kind of thing. The difference between those two vehicles alone, just forget about the 115% versus 105%, but from the city's perspective, how risky is it to have a line of credit, a letter of credit, sorry, not a line of credit, a letter of credit, versus an escrow fund? Are either one of those inherently riskier than the other, and if so, like, by what magnitude? What's your perception?
Right. I'll try to answer part of that, of what I can, and some of it I may not be able to answer. You know, our default is a letter of credit for a reason, because that, in our opinion, that's the easiest thing for us to access, if we need to access money. We did work with the applicant to really try to understand the escrow agreement, and, you know, make sure we felt like it was operable, that we would be able to access money. I mean, there are, the way it's written, we should be able to access money. It may not be as easy, but as written, it seems to state that we can access the funds if needed, you know, if we got to that position of having to do the work. I can't really assess the risk. I'm not quite sure how, other than, you know, a letter of credit is probably less risky for the city, but I can't really say how much more risky this alternate provision is.
So, one question I have about the process is, mostly, the public improvements are done at the very beginning, right? Like, a lot of what we're talking about is roads, infrastructure, sewage, water, you know, the roads.
We're anticipating three years.
Right. But it's, a lot of it's done before a building's ever built. And I understand we have some provisions in there, a lot of it. So, can you help me understand, like, what?
Right.
If you have any sense of, like, what percentage of what they're doing for the city, like, these public roads and infrastructure, will be done before buildings get done?
Right. So, it's a little unusual, and it's a big project, as we've all talked about. It's a big subdivision. They've chose not to phase it. They want to do it all in one phase, and there's lots of reasons for that, I think, from the developer's side. We've put provisions in here that allow us to issue building permits while, you know, while the infrastructure's being put in, and we anticipate that might and could take place. We have provisions in there that typically, we wouldn't issue a certificate of occupancy until all of the infrastructure's done. We wrote in there that the city can grant an exception. If somebody's ready for a certificate of occupancy, and all of the needed systems, the water, the sewer, the transportation system, is adequate, the city staff can say, yes, that area is, has adequate services. You can go ahead and open that early, and get your certificate of occupancy early. So, we've provided that flexibility in there. In my experience, lots of subdivision improvement agreements, people want to move in before the infrastructure's done. We've commonly amended subdivision improvement agreements, so I don't think that flexibility's bad, as far as allowing the city to work with a developer that's continuing to progress on their infrastructure, and we have a development that wants to come online. I think having some flexibility is fine within the agreement.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's risk, I think someone pointed out, there's risk to everything, right? There's certainly a major risk to the, to our community of having this not happen, right? We've got 140 acres of open space coming our way. We have a new home for our hospital, hopefully, coming our way. We have a new campus drive, hopefully, coming our way. We have a lot of things that we would be risking, losing, if we can't figure out, you know, a way to get to the finish line. But at the same time, I do understand that there's, this carries with it a perception, at least a perception of more risk. It is complicated, and it does sound like, you know, there are funds on hand, and the city's got a mechanism to access those escrow funds. And it's interesting, I think, it does seem more dynamic in the sense of, hey, if we need $100 million, and we've done half of the project, and we're reassessing every month, like, we only need $50 million left in escrow. We don't need $100 million, you know, letter of credit when we're halfway done. We just need 50, so being able to scale down, when you're down to just $10 million left, like, oh, well, we only need 10, you know, plus 5%. Like, it makes a lot of sense to only need the amount of funds you need as the project goes along, over the next three, four, five, 10 years. So, I think, generally speaking, like, it makes sense to me as a financing mechanism. And it's still, I mean, I think the part that I want to make sure we're all identifying, right, is that the developers are certainly paying their own way. Like, they are paying for all of this infrastructure, and it's a matter of where are those funds being held and secured, and how secure are those funds? And I'm decently satisfied with what I'm understanding from staff's work, and from our attorneys and their attorneys, that this is, you know, a typical, and, you know, not crazy, crazy unusual way to fund a large, large project like this, that's dynamic over time, and, like we said, with monthly check-ins, that it is always having 105% of what is left to do, with an independent, you know, person looking at that. I'm satisfied that this, for me, is not a deal breaker on the entire project. This is an interesting, I think, you know, our staff and their developers trying to work to a solution, so I don't have any, like, there's nothing I can point to that I think is a deal breaker for me.
Thanks. Yes. Councilmember Hallington.
Thank you. When looking at the preliminary plat compared to this final one before us tonight, a major difference is introducing the SIA into the final approval process. And as a council member, I have a responsibility to make sound financial decisions on behalf of the city. And while I do certainly appreciate the presentation tonight from the applicant and staff, I'm not certain that I feel confident in the proposed financing before us tonight without consulting outside counsel ourselves who has expertise in this area. I'm not saying it's good or bad. I think the lawyers in the room would agree that we need to do our due diligence as well, and to me, that's seeking counsel from someone who has expertise in this area. I appreciate Rob's comments, but he also admitted the limits of his knowledge with weighing the risks and benefits of this. So I need more information before I can be confident that this section of our code is being met tonight.
Okay. Councilmember, Councilmember Kurt.
Thank you. To build on what Councilmember Hamilton was saying, to actually put this to our city attorney, is there a way for that information to relatively quickly, if there isn't an expert in the field that you're able to bring in to answer those questions, to make sure that the city's financial interests can be met with this, that we're not putting ourselves into undue risk?
Well, the city does have Public Finance Council, and that person might be able to offer an opinion. You know, I guess we did look at other communities, and as Ms. McGeady said, every community is a little bit different, and their underlying regulations are a little bit different. So there wasn't really a match for match. And they do vary across the spectrum. You know, for instance, in Broomfield, when there's a metro district involved, they just sort of don't worry about any improvement guarantee for public improvements. They just consider that as the metro district will take care of it. You know, that's on, I think, a different end of the continuum than this council tends to be from a policy standpoint. You know, I'll just add on to what Rob said about the letter of credit. And the reason why a letter of credit is kind of the gold standard for an improvement guarantee is that after, if there's a breach, after providing the subdivider notice and an opportunity to cure that breach, if it's not cured, the city just goes to the bank and draws on the letter of credit and can use those funds to either, you know, if it's improvements that were put in that are deficient to fix them, or an improvement that wasn't done at all, the city has a lot of control. Introducing an escrow agent may or may not provide an equivalent level of control. I mean, it's papered such, but it's a different relationship than the city has experience with. So we can't really tell you how that works. I mean, I've represented communities that have drawn on letters of credit, and it's very easy. And then the bonding that, you know, when we get to the warranty period, bonds are not easy to make a claim against. And, you know, we have had experience in the city of Louisville, not with a subdivider, but with a contractor of our own, where we've had to, had to work with a bonding company on a default, and it's not easy. So I wouldn't put that 5% that there's bonds in the same level of protection as having, like, the 15% warranty, letter of credit, or cash guarantee that the city normally carries during the warranty period, because in my view, it's not equivalent protection. It's a lot more difficult. And the city is not going to be in control of, you know, those bonds are held by the metro district's contractors. So the city isn't going to be the party drawing on those bonds if there's some problem that needs to be fixed during the warranty period. Yeah. And we could certainly consult with, you know, the Public Finance Council has worked on the metro district application that is on the agenda after this, but I don't believe she has reviewed the improvement guarantee. And she may have some thoughts, and she may have some experience from other municipalities where she's worked.
Okay. And then, I guess this goes to a conversation with the developer. We do have some measure of risk and concern. Could there be a combination of the escrow and credit to satisfy some of our needs?
I think the problem, I tend to be very unpersuaded that redoing a deal from a DIAS is, first of all, what's really within the scope of what we know how to do, or can, or really should. I mean, one of the things that's hard about this, and it is hard, is that we are being asked to make a decision about risk. And as Mayor Pro Tem just said, there's a risk of moving forward, and there's a risk of not moving forward. And I don't know, and we don't know what, you know, effect delays are going to have, but we can imagine that there is, if there's money at stake, there's, you know, there's dollars and cents that are being lost or gained, mostly lost, at least from the applicant's standpoint. But that's something that we have to, you know, we'll have to wrestle with. It's, we can ask all the questions that we want of counsel, and we're still, ultimately, we're going to have to make that kind of a decision. This is the, this is the proposal that's before us. We don't have to accept it.
I guess one of my questions then would be, why not, if there are concerns that came directly from our city attorney who has worked with the director of planning, why, why not come up with an alternate idea unless the developer was just not interested in any kind of additional or alternate means that would help reduce the risk or concern of the community? Because clearly, it's been demonstrated by staff that that would be a concern that we would have. It's come up several times. It's something that you've looked into extensively, and I'm grateful for that. What I'm hearing is that we do have a worry from a legal perspective, and that this is an unusually low amount of warranty coverage for the city than what we've used in the past. Have we ever needed any of our warranty coverage for anything that we've done? Big?
I don't know in the history of the city. I know in the time I've been here, we haven't had to go into any warranty coverage during a warranty period that the city's had to access. Like I said, you know, typically, if there's a warranty issue, we do have warranty corrections, and then we ask the developer to fix those. They typically fix them. We don't have to dip into that. That money's there again if something happens and they don't fix it themselves, then we have the opportunity to go fix it.
So I just want to clarify one more time and ask you, staff does recommend this. Even with some of the concerns, you are still recommending that this is a good path forward for this project?
So, we've tried to work with the applicant to make it as workable as possible. So in staff working with the applicant, we've told them our preference, which is a letter of credit at 115%, they have the option to come to council and, you know, make a proposal for the alternative, and that's what they're doing here, is they're presenting the alternative. I think what the staff and the city attorney are doing is we're trying to demonstrate where you should be looking, and yes, there's some additional risk here, and I think there's a question of, you know, is council willing, all things considered, to take on some additional risk? Do you feel like it's reasonable in this case?
Thank you.
Other council members?
The number that was flashed up was 60 million was going to be placed in escrow. Is that number accurate?
So it, I think it's close. I think one of our conditions is we want to reserve the right for the city engineer to do a final review. We've done several rounds of review, and we feel like it's close, but it may not be exact of what gets put in the final SIA if it's approved.
Okay. So using 60 million as the escrow number, the delta's $6 million. Given the project size, connecting campus drive, underpasses, that is a, that's a number I am willing to risk for this project to move forward. I don't think that's something that we, as you say, Chris, on the DIAS, what-if scenarios, we've kicked this can down far enough. We're talking $6 million of risk to the city, if that's the number. And that's a big if, from what I'm understanding. So to hold up this project for $6 million, in my estimation, is the wrong decision we're making up here, personally. So we have got a huge opportunity in front of us that the developer's willing to fund, and for us to screw this up for $6 million, in my opinion, would be a big mistake.
Hey. Yeah. Councilmember Kurt?
I think putting the numbers in that perspective was good. That is similar to what the requested budget was just for one year of paving, repaving in the city of Louisville. And I think you're right. That's, that's a minimal risk, given the size of the project, what it will entail. Yeah. I, I, I think, I mean, I agree. I think that there are some concerns for this community, but we're very conservative when it comes to this, and I am, by all means, a hardcore fiscal conservative, but I think you're right.
Well, and the other thing to add, that's at the beginning, right? We haven't even started it. We're all assuming things are going to be broken, they're not going to fix it. That number gets smaller and smaller over time. So even at the risk, say that the escrow is down to 10 million, right? We're talking, that'd be a million-dollar risk to the city. That number gets exponentially smaller. So for us, you know, we're already at the, you know, haven't even started, to be talking about this number relative to what the city would be gaining, I mean, the land dedication alone is in the tens of millions of dollars. We're talking about, at most, $6 million. That's at the beginning. As that escrow gets down, the risk goes down with us. So I'm comfortable with the way it's set up. Ideally, you know, so that's, I've stated my point.
Yeah. Mayor Pro Tem?
I think just for clarification, I think the warranty amount stays the same, right? Like, you're warranting all the work that was done, so like, even at the end, the warranty of 5% will still be 3 million?
Yes.
Yeah. So that part will actually be the difference between 3 and 9 million at the end, so that won't get smaller, but, but the project will get smaller, and then needing to have 105% of what's left will get smaller and smaller and smaller, but the warranty amount will remain in, like, perpetuity. How long's the warranty?
It's two years.
Two years. So for that, two years, but just to make sure that we're getting that right. Yeah, I mean, I, I agree that there's, you know, campus drive itself is, you know, the fact that they're building that is an incredible benefit to our community and millions and millions of dollars that we're not going to have to spend. And the underpass that Councilmember Hamilton argued for and got, I think, is fantastic for that commuting and what it does, what it does for the safety of Monarch High School and those students, and then also just relieving congestion and making the traffic flow around there better, like, all those things. And I don't mean, forget the development, I think you guys are going to remember the development, but forget the whole development, campus drive improvements for me are huge and millions of dollars, right? And so that, that part is one of, one of the main reasons I'm supportive in general of, of this entire project is, again, what it brings to the city. And as a council member, you know, bringing this property tax money, bringing the sales tax money, bringing campus drive, bringing 140 acres of open space, bringing a new park, bringing better bike connections and overpasses and underpasses, bringing all of that to our community is important. And we are, you know, facing, if you guys are following what council's doing this year, we're facing budgetary constraints now, and we're, we're scrimping on affordable housing, we're scrimping on pavement, we're scrimping on sustainability issues because we're out of money and are, we're having budget shortfalls. And so, you know, having a project of this size in this part of our community that has been a vacant lot of storage tech for 20 years now, this is, this is important, the extra benefits that come to the city in property tax and sales tax are going to help us do more open space, do more parks work, do more of everything that we're trying to do in this community. And so, like you said, Councilmember Beerman, the risk of not having quite as much backstop, for me, is worth it for all the benefits that we're potentially getting out of this larger project, which is imperfect and in a lot of ways, it doesn't mean it's this perfect, perfect project, but I didn't even mention our hospital. Like, I went through all these benefits and forgot about Avista. I hope you're not listening. That's a huge piece to this puzzle, right, is, is our hospital, right? And so, you know, we're not going to get a new hospital in this new space without figuring out a way to get to the finish line here. And so these are all really important things to me, and it is not capitulating to developers. It is, I think, trying to work, be a solution-oriented body and a solution-oriented community and trying to get to that. And to that point, if you don't mind my soapbox, the work that you're, that the entire city has done is, I know that you have been working on this in one way, shape, or form for at least five years, because I couldn't even talk about this when I was running for council five years ago. So years before that, the, someone mentioned how quick this is going. So seven years of working on this, and how much time our staff has put into this, and the expertise with everyone involved is mind-numbing, and it is a little bit, it's hard to remember that I'm just a member of the community who was elected to this. The trust and the faith that we put in our staff and our finance team and our planning team and our public works team, the amount of work that Kurt has put into this project and everyone in that is just unbelievable. Whatever the result is, the amount of time you guys have put in and the expertise you have given us and our applicants is just unbelievable. So thank you all. I know the crowd is small today for staff, but if you can pass it along to all your other people, there's just some comments that bother me tonight around, you know, what you guys have done or the amount of effort you put in, or have you thought about, is one of those things that makes it hard. So that's just a kind of aside, so thanks for letting me take that aside.
Okay. Other comments? I guess I'm going to, before we kind of see if there's a consensus one way or another, I have several points to make. I mean, one is, I don't think this is a question of desperation at all. This is an opportunity that we have, which is transformative of the community. It doesn't come around very often. It is, you know, there, people are still here, five years later. How much longer all of us are going to be willing to rehash and either, as you might see it, take extra time, or on the other end of the spectrum, dither more with this, I think, is what we're trying to figure out. But I think the fact that, you know, we've seen what is planned, I think we know that we approved a plat, I mean, we've approved, I don't think the question is so much the plat, except this SIA is the hardest part, right? That's what we're struggling with right now. But part of this is, you don't build infrastructure these days on a big project without a metro district. That's not the way, it's just not done anymore. And so when we chose to do that, that, and there were plenty of people who said we shouldn't do that. I think that was a good decision then, I think it's a good decision now, but there are some of these changes that we're looking at are a function of the metro district. I mean, Mr. Painter said a little bit ago, there are statutory limitations that they face. But the project doesn't go through with the city finances itself. It's just not going to happen. That's why we're doing it the way we're doing it. So I think it's important to recognize that, that's a, you know, it's a good thing. It doesn't mean that there is It doesn't mean that there is no risk. There is a lot of risk in perseverating too much further, because our, our staff, our council has worked on this for ages. It has been, you know, arguably, a couple of years in working through some of these agreements. And I believe our staff has worked very hard to support the city's interest, and I sure as heck know that the, the applicant has, negotiated hard on its end as well, whether, whether we choose to, to accept the, the risks that are going to arise out of agreement is, is the key point. I am, myself, comfortable, yeah, I don't think anybody's comfortable with risk, right? I mean, if we had 100% opportunity to, you know, where everything is going to work beautifully and simply, and we had 20 years of experience with the same kind of agreements, it might feel better. But this is a new, you know, it's a new organ, using the metro district for this. We're not accustomed to doing things that way. We've been presented with an opportunity, it's a little bit unfamiliar, but I think, you know, the, the, the city attorney described the, the alternative of a letter of credit, which is, is obviously been a sticking point, and, you know, is a, a key distinction between what I think the city has been negotiating for and what the applicant has. But I do think that when we look at the structure that we're talking about under the SIA, I am, I appreciate Mr. Painter's description of the disincentives that are built in to the structure for, for a default with no correction. I, I think that the stakes are big enough for the metro district and for those involved that, that the, the, the risk is an appropriate one for the city to be able to take, given what I see as huge potential upsides for the city financially, yes, but not just. There's a lot of open space. I haven't been to that property in way more than five years. I'd like to be able to go to that property. Other people in the city would love to be able to go to that property, enjoy the wildlife and the open spaces, and we need a Vista, and we need, we need Campus Drive. We've needed Campus Drive for a long time. It is dangerous not to have that road completed. We have another means of egress, it's not sufficient. And so, I, you know, for, for those kinds of things, I think we've discussed some of the other real positives out of this. I'm, I'm happy that redenticides aren't going to be used out there. I, I think that's a big thing, from my perspective, and it's going to be great to, for the Raptors and every, everything else out there, too. They're really positive things. This is not a, something where we're just over a barrel. I think it is a risk that we have to evaluate, and we have. I am not convinced that spending much more time getting yet another opinion about something, I think we know what, what the ramifications are of this sort of structure for the deal is in the financing. So, I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with it. I, I think, and we can talk a little bit about what other conditions we have, but I want to find, you know, it sounds that there's reticence, I've heard reticence from at least two members of council for proceeding, at least tonight. Where is everybody on that? Why don't I go at least down, because if, if people want additional input, then we're going to have to continue to update certain. But I'm wanting to know where people are at on, on the decision on, on this, because if you really want something, you know, additional information, then that's fine, but it, there'll be a delay on that, and I need to know that before we go further. Yeah. Councilmember Kern?
I think the risk is going to be worth the reward to the city of Lewisville, to its residents.
Protem? You have, you have to speak. If I were in, if I were in deposition, I would say a nod of the head, a shake of the head.
I already spoke in support. I'm in support.
Councilmember? Councilmember Hamilton?
So, I agree with my councilmembers that there are many benefits to this project, the open space, the hospital. I asked for the underpass, and we got the underpass. So, clearly, I am invested in taking the feedback from the community and building the best possible Red Tail Ridge that we can. That's not what I'm talking about tonight. What I'm talking about tonight is that I'm not certain I feel comfortable taking on what could be financial risk for the city, based on one presentation from the applicant, which was great, and I don't doubt its validity, but I think we need to do our due diligence, and if it takes an extra week to say we're protecting the city and its dollars and its people, for me personally, with a project of this size and feet and dollars, it's worth it. And this just might be where we disagree as a council, and that's, that's fine. But for me, I don't feel confident with the proposed financing without some more information. And I, seems like I'm an outlier in this, and that's totally okay.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward the way it is, but that's how, like I stated my.
I think the consensus is to move forward, but let's talk a little bit, given that. And I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Hamilton, and I think all of us do. And I appreciate all the comments of my fellow councilpeople, because all, everybody looks at this in a little bit different way, which is just exactly why you have seven heads up here, instead of just one. Let's talk a little bit about the conditions that we, that we've included in, or that are included in the resolution, or the draft resolution. Can you bring those up again, Director? And maybe, yeah. So, in, this one, yeah.
Do you want me to go over any of them, just to kind of go quickly through them, or you just want to read them?
Quickly swing through them.
Right. So, the, the first one is, before recording the plat, that the ci, the, the city engineer would approve the final cost estimates and scope of the improvements. So, again, we've done multiple rounds of review, the city engineer still wanted a final review of that, before it gets recorded. The next one is the provision about the value of the water right transfer. There is a cost that needs to be plugged in for their contribution to a sewer extension. The city engineer wants to review that final cost. There's still some back and forth about the final engineering cost, that's the next one. Number six was actually missing from the SIA, so we would add a new section there, contributing 14% to the cost of a road improvement north of Dillon on 96th. The next one is really just making sure that all of those agreements get executed. That includes the wastewater treatment plan agreement and the SIA and escrow agreement, which is an exhibit to that. And then the operations and maintenance agreement with the metro district. Those were all included in your application. I think, just for confirmation here, those would be approved with this action if you do approve the plat with the motion. And so, we just want to make sure those are included. There's the access easement. All indications are BVSD is absolutely fine, providing a public access easement for the landing for the underpass. And then the Good Hugh Ditch, resolution on all the Good Hugh Ditch, the easement requirements, and any other agreements they need. And then, we get this all the time, but we added it. So, before we get dedication of property, we need warranty deeds, title insurance, and legal descriptions to go with the transfer of those properties. So, that's all the, that's all the public land dedications. So, all that has to happen before you record the plat. And then, there's the last one that I've read into the record a few times. I, I won't go over that unless you really want me to, because my phone's over there.
Okay.
But I'm happy to, in all seriousness, if you want me to read that again.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. For good measure.
Crossing Ts.
Prior to recording the final plat, revise the SIA to distinguish between Exhibit B, which graphically depicts the improvements to be constructed, and Exhibit C, which is the cost estimate for the improvements to be secured by the improvement guarantee. So, all total, there's nine recommended conditions of approval for the resolution.
I think, at least from my perspective, adding, and I'm, I'm not inclined to provide drafting from the dais specifically, but the concept that I think I'd like to be able to add is that the applicant, or the, I guess it's, it's the metro, the metro district and the app, and Sterling Bay provide resilience measures that are consistent with what we would expect in, from, well, I think we're going to have to include some kind of standard. I mean, but the easy way of doing it is to have an agreement between our...
I, I have a, I have a recommended language for that, if you'd like. So, the construction documents shall be amended to remove wood mulch and junipers, which I think is the issue. I think all the other landscaping in there is appropriate. So, it'd be, the construction documents shall be amended to remove wood mulch and junipers. And if you wanted, we could say, and any other plant materials or other materials that the city finds would create a fire danger.
Fair. That's one.
Yeah, I, I'd rather have it be a little more expanded, I mean...
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, just not, be, go be, just the language you mentioned, not just juniper bushes and wood mulch.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be all more encompassing.
The word reasonable belongs in there.
Yeah.
Reasonable measures, and other reasonable measures to mitigate against wildfire. Yeah. Go ahead.
I like all those. I wouldn't strike any of them, or decrease or increase any of those measures, so I'm happy with those, and happy with the one that you suggested.
I'm not sure what the applicant would say to those, but we can, let's finish this discussion, and then we can circle back. Are there other conditions?
So, because I did ask, like, what the differences were between the preliminary and the final, and I found under landscaping, which is under the, like, the public dedication landscaping, it says landscaping. What I don't find, and I find the section about not using rodenticides, I don't see anything about the, the wildlife studies for things like the burlow, which is actually an endangered species, I think. So, I think it was noted to us as a council that that would be done, and this is a very long document, to appreciate the work, but I just can't find it in here. If somebody can point that out as to where that is stated in the agreement that it's there, that would be great.
Sorry, what was the que, what are you looking for?
So, in, in the, the preliminary, there was conversation that the, the wildlife studies, just to make sure that we are preserving some of the species of concern, like the burlow, what, where is it in this language, in the agreement? Like, I found the landscape piece, but I can't find that.
There's nothing in the subdivision improvement agreement. I think what we wanted them to do, what staff asked them to do, was provide a memo explaining how they meet all, how they will meet all of the standards for doing the wildlife studies that they're required to for their development. So, there's a memo in there, instead of the agreement. And, and, and the reason why is because the way it was originally, was that there'd be ongoing wildlife studies, and I don't think anybody's suggesting that. The idea is that when you're doing construction, there are certain requirements for endangered species and other things that you have to monitor wildlife as you're doing construction to make sure, you know, you're not violating any of those endangered species laws. So, we just wanted to make sure that they had a solid plan together for that, because if they give us wildlife studies, you know, you know, what are we to do? I mean, it's interesting information, but we're not, we're not in a position to ensure compliance. So, we thought it was better to go the opposite direction from the preliminary plat, which was they just demonstrate how they're going to comply, rather than us have that information with...
And, and there are requirement, and the requirements are state and federal requirements that get enforced separately. I mean, there's, it's one thing to require a plan, which I think that's important, and I think is, that's been done, yes.
Right. So, they, they do have different plans in wildlife studies that were included with the preliminary plat. I want to defer to the applicant to describe what they've done so far and what they plan to do in the future. But they, they did with the preliminary have an initial wildlife study done.
Yeah. I mean, so who does oversee that that's, that they're compliant during construction with that? Is it just on the honor system? Since the city's not?
I think we can allow the applicant to speak to that.
Oh, it's on Mac.
Yeah, it's fine. I got it.
Ryan Amos, with Sterling Bay. So, for the, all of the surveys and the governing jurisdictions, it would be both on the federal and state level. We also have Division of Wildlife, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Divisions, that we would have to report to. CPW, we would also have to report to. So, there's multiple jurisdictions that we would have to submit migratory bird, bird surveys, the burlow surveys. We have performed these surveys in preparation and following those guidelines, basically each time we thought we were going to start construction. However, if we're not in the breeding season, which is usually between the spring and the fall months, if we start grading, we're not within that breeding season. So, basically, if we start grading or construction activities between, I'll say, December and February, then we're not within that breeding season, and we kind of don't have to do the surveys. But if we continue in through that, we would still maintain those construction studies to maintain all of the regulations that we'd have to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, are you comfortable, Councilmember Kern, that, okay, no additional condition needs to be added? Okay. All right. Let me ask if all the council members know, well, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and move passage. Actually, I should close the hearing, right? Close the public... Closing the public hearing. Okay. I'm going to move the passage of Resolution Number 38, Series 2024, Resolution recommending approval of the Redtail Ridge filing number one, final subdivision plat, as described in our conversation just a few moments ago. I think with the changes in the latest version is up on the screen, and the one change that the Director of Community Development suggested around fire resilience. Does everybody know what we're voting on?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion further? Okay, let's take a roll call.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Bearman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Dickinson.
Yes.
Taking just a moment, I would suggest that we continue on. And we have only one other matter on the agenda, which is Resolution Number 39, Series 2024, regarding the approval of amended and restated service plans for the Redtail Ridge Metropolitan District and Re, Redtail Ridge Metropolitan District, number one, two, and numbers one, two, and four, in the city of Louisville, County of Boulder, State of Colorado.
Ready for staff presentation?
Please.
Okay. So the city council approved the initial service plan in 2020, so that was so that they could form the district. But we recognized at that time and put some conditions in there that we wanted them to come back with the final plat, and that they would have to amend the, the service plan at that time to make sure that the infrastructure costs matched and consistency with the final plat. So before they could issue debt, issue bonds, all of that had to happen. So now we have the final plat approved, and so this would need to take place as well for the development. Here's some, here are the changes from the initial service plan on the left and what was, what's being proposed with the new service plan. The construction, the total construction costs are similar, but a little less. The district funding of infrastructure that's being proposed, with the initial one, they were proposing not to fund the entirety of the infrastructure, just a portion of it. Now they're proposing to fund all of the infrastructure with the Metro District. Their total debt issuance limit originally was 1.25 times that estimated infrastructure cost, so there was a lot of discussion about trying to limit that. They are proposing to go up to 1.42 times the funding. They are requesting the allowance for public improvement fees and a special improvement district to be included. And then, everything below that is the same or very similar. It's actually the same, all the limits. There were some changes to the language, but the maximum total mill levy. So these are the maximum amount of debt and taxes that they can charge on the future property owners, so that it's a maximum of 60 mils, 50 mils for the debt, to pay off the debt, and then 10 mils for operations. So the Metro District, again, would have a lot of, they would be maintaining the right of way, they'd be running a transportation demand management program in addition to normal Metro District operations. So they did provide some financial analysis on that as well. The maximum debt mill levy imposition term, that's the, that's 40 years, so that's the same with both proposals. So really, what's changed are kind of some of those funding numbers, and then the total debt issuance limit is, is a change. Just, you know, you're looking to make sure that the service plan includes all of these things, that's in the packet, I'm not going to go over that, and then your review criteria. But again, happy to answer any questions. We engaged with Butler Snow, law firm, and then Hilltop Securities, our financial advisor, they helped us review this. They have no objections. Hilltop has a letter in the packet. We also decided to contract with Economic and Planning Systems to do a little bit of a but-for analysis, because it's, it's a large amount. We don't want undue tax burden on the future property owners, so we asked EPS to look at, you know, to get a reasonable rate of return. Is it reasonable, the amount of infrastructure that they'd be funding with the Metro District? And their conclusion was, yes, this would fall within a reasonable rate of return. So we worked with those three consultants, and that's staff's presentation, so that's before you for consideration tonight.
Thank you. Counsel, are there questions that any of you have for the director? Is there a presentation for the Metro District?
Do you have time to?
No.
Okay.
I don't have a presentation prepared, because I had reviewed what staff was presenting, and that pretty much covers it. And I think all of the information about the project and its infrastructure costs, we've been talking about, but I can go over any aspect of the service plan or service plan revisions from the original plan, if you have questions about that.
Councilmembers, any questions about those? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, no. Are there public comments?
No.
None, none online? We have a lot of folks still with us, but no, no questions there. All right. And anybody, nobody else in? Now, I'm looking back at Mr. Cooperman. He's, all right, then bringing back to council, comments, yes? Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, I think, you know, when we approved this, actually, when was it? 2021, maybe? What's that?
2020.
2020. You know, I think there's a lot of talk about special districts and these taxing entities, and I think one of the big concerns on these is you get these really high mill levies, and there's a big tax burden on the property owner. And I think most of that concern comes in with, you know, individual homeowners sort of not realizing this extra tax burden that they have moving into a, a place with, with a special district. But, you know, what's being designed here is, you know, all of these will be very complicated and, you know, savvy businesses and buildings. This is not the kind of thing where they're going to miss the mill levy part of their costs. So, you know, some of the big concerns we have around, around, around this aren't, for me, aren't a big issue here. So I don't, the changes, otherwise, it's, oh, well, that's, that's even more money, that's going to be, you know, more debt for the future property owners to pay back. But I'm not, I'm not concerned about that from a city council perspective or from protecting any of these landowners in the future. So I, I don't have any issues with the changes, and the caps are still there, so it just sounds like they'll probably have to, you know, borrow or charge a higher mill levy than they wanted to, but still, they have the caps of 50 and 10. So I'm, I'm, and 40 years, so I'm, I'm fine with these adjustments, and that's, that's between them and their landowners, kind of as far as I see it.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem. Other questions, comments, concerns? Good. Is there a motion on the Resolution Number 39?
Yeah, I'd move that we approve Resolution Number 39, Series 2024, regarding the approval of amended and restated service plans for the Redtail Ridge Metropolitan District and Redtail Ridge Metropolitan District, numbers one, two, and four, in the city of Louisville, County of Boulder, State of Colorado.
Can we get a roll call?
Second.
Oh, excuse me. Any other discussion? Okay. Can we get a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bearman.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
No.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution passes. Next matter is city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report.
Okay. Council comments, committee reports, identification of future agenda items. Mayor Pro Tem. Yeah. I do. One thing I would mention on, two things. One, on September 3rd, we're going to have a discussion about the budget for 2025, '26, and it's going to be a challenging discussion, and I know councilmembers are up to it, and the people of Louisville are up to it, and staff is definitely up to it. And we'll, just wanted to make sure people who are interested in the community have noticed of that, a little extra notice, and invite them to come participate or follow online, and let us know, if you'd like, in writing, what, what you think about the initial staff recommendation, which is what we're going to be looking at and evaluating. The other piece is that we're, we tabled the discussion about the IIEC residential energy code and commercial energy code, and we're going to be on the 17th, I believe, having a discussion around several policy issues, generally speaking, with an eye to revising the, particularly this commercial code, but there are other parts of both codes that I think are worthy of discussion. But what we wanted to try to do, oh. No, I'm just, yeah. I mean, what, what we are like, anyway, we'll be dealing with that, those policy questions on the 17th. That'll help us decide whether to move forward with the changes or, or not, and to have a discussion around discussion, well, it'll be discussion direction around those, those measures. Any other questions, comments, committee reports? Right to a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.